Okay, good evening to you all. Those of you who've been here before know that's the signal to begin. So, welcome to our April eighteen regular council meeting. Hope you've all had a good day and we're ready to conduct some business for the town tonight. So, we'll begin our meeting as we usually do by asking our town clerk to call the roll.
I'm Marshburn.
Yep, I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Yeah.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much and thank you councilmembers for all being present tonight. I'm going to recognize Councilmember Gray Singleton, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also in our invocation. If you can stand, if you can.
(Inaudible) America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
Would like to join me in the invocation. Tell my Father we thank you for this beautiful day, this beautiful time of the year when your life comes with so many flowers and plants blooming all across our town. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here and talk about important matters for our town and our surrounding community, be with the members of this council, members of the staff, and the members of the community who are here tonight to talk about and listen to these items we will discuss. Father, want to lift up those who have lost loved ones recently, those who are suffering from sickness or illness, especially want to lift up the men and women, the US military who represent and protected our country and the countries in which they serve around the globe. Be with these men and women and be with their families. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Singleton. Okay, we always begin our meeting with something called petitions and comments, and so you're asked usually to sign up in advance with the town clerk. Ms. Gibson, do we have anyone sign up this evening?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. So, I usually try to be flexible. If there's someone here who failed to sign up who came with the express purpose of wanting to give some comments or a petition to the council, I will recognize you at this time. If you'll simply raise your hand. All right, thank you. We will move on to the next item then. We have, the next item will be the adoption of the agenda, and council, you have the agenda before you. A motion would be in order at this time.
So moved.
Set.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews and Ms. Behringer. If you favor approving the agenda, would you vote aye, please?
Aye.
Is there any opposition? And there is none. Okay, we have some presentations this evening, and I want to recognize, let's see, is Chief Smith, where is she? Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you behind the podium.
I'm hiding.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, and thank you for being here, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'd like to tell you all a story tonight about some heroic acts from some of our community members, a group of four women and one man. On Tuesday, February the twenty-eighth of this year, at about eleven AM in the morning, this group of five community members just happened to be in the right place at the right time. So, like I said, at about eleven AM, they observed a subject who they believed to be experiencing a mental health crisis, walking along the bridge on Van Dore Springs Road at US seventy highway. After speaking with Ms. Richardson, she said she saw the subject walking on the bridge and thought, well, that's a little odd, until she saw him step over the opposite side of the ledge, which caused her immediate concern. She immediately stopped, along with several other people, and approached the subject who they believed to be in crisis. Those individuals are Heather Morris, Zane Suvanlasi, Kylie Larrabee, Keonia Holliday, and Latasha Richardson, and I believe Ms. Larrabee and Ms. Richardson are here in the audience with us tonight. They quickly acted to help the subject in crisis. Ms. Richardson approached him and began a conversation with him, and talked with him for a few moments while others called nine-one-one. When it didn't appear that the conversation was working, they continued to talk to him until gradually they were able to pull him back over on the right side of the bridge, where they continued to talk with him, until police arrived. So, I want to take the opportunity tonight to recognize these citizens for their heroism and their courage this day, when they stopped to help someone that they saw who was in crisis and in need of assistance, because without their help, I have no doubt this would have had a very tragic outcome. So, right now, I would like to ask Ms. Richardson and Ms. Larrabee if you would come forward, please, and I'm going to ask Lieutenant Castellana if he will assist me in presenting each of you with a Garner Police Department civilian accommodation that reads, to Kylie Larrabee and Latasha Richardson, go ahead and take those. It states that on February the twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-three, you, without hesitation, offered help to a fellow citizen in crisis, which also aided the public safety agencies responding to the scene. Your selfless acts of kindness exemplify the virtue of good citizenship. So, thank you. Thank you for what you did that day, because without your efforts, we have no doubt that this would have ended in a different way. So, if you will join me in giving them a round of applause.
Thank you so much, Chief Smith, and to you ladies, that's quite a touching story, and it's true. So, thank you so much for what you did, for being observant, and, you know, sometimes when we see something that's out of the ordinary, we sometimes turn away from it, we're not sure what to do. So, thank you for what you did. Thank you, Chief, where did you go again? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for taking the time from your department to come over and recognize these ladies. I think it's a sign of the great relationship that you promote and promote with the community, and it helps certainly the strong respect that our citizens have for the police department. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you. It's just another example of the strong partnership that we have with our community, and so, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to share this with you tonight.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we do have another presentation at this time. Ladies, if you need to leave, we'll acknowledge that, so thank you again for coming out. I'm going to recognize Councilmember Phil Matthews, who has a proclamation that the mayor has signed, and he will read that and present that this evening. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how you follow that, but here we go. Good evening, everyone. Proclamation Building Safety Month, whereas the town of Garner is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, infrastructure, playbooth, and at both in everyday life. Whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe constructions of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment, to create and implement highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, earthquakes, and whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity, and whereas it starts with you, the theme for Building Safety Month in two thousand and twenty-three, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on personal, local, and a global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided, all of us, by local, state building departments, fiber prevention bureaus, federal agencies, and protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Ken Marshman, Mayor of the town of Garner, do hereby proclaim the month of May two thousand and twenty-three as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. Sign, Ken Marshman, Mayor of Garner.
Thank you so much, Phil. Is Mr. Paget with us? I believe I see him back there. If you will, we'll ask him to come up and make any comments he cares to make and receive Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just got a couple of things to say. Thank you for the proclamation. Building Safety Month aims to raise awareness about building safety by recognizing the building process and providing the public with the necessary information to ensure the safety of their homes and businesses. Our Development Services Department, which include the engineering, inspections, and planning department, play an important role during the entire construction process. Examples such as evaluation for adequate access to include emergency responders, adequate water supply, building spacing, line of sight, and flood damage prevention. As each project continues, our departments verify compliance with our codes, ordinance, standards, and UDO prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy. Once a CO is issued, staff continues to ensure buildings are maintained per our codes and ordinances. With this year, we're going to include weekly themes on our website to encourage additional information following the Building Safety Month. We've got five themes following ICC. The first week is May first through seventh, and it's Building Safety Starts at Home. Topics are going to cover fire safety, building safety, and sustainability. The second week is Building Safety Professionals in You. The topics there will be what do building professionals do and when to call them. The third is Prepare Your Community. It's going to talk about how codes protect against disasters, disaster preparedness, and hazard mitigation. The fourth week is To Advocate For Your Community. We'll put out tips and tools to help advocate for building safety. It'll address in your community ways of letting your voice be heard and getting kids involved into this, as well as what it takes to become a building professional or a building safety professional. And lastly, is solving challenges together from a more than just our community aspect, and we're looking at extreme weather events and water scarcity. Talks about building resiliency solutions around the world, and then modern building codes and how it supports sustainability. So, thank you for the time to make the few comments, and thank you for the proclamation and the support that you give all three of our departments as we continue to grow Garner. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Mr. Paget, and for reminding us all of the important work that goes on. I had forgotten that this was a declared month until fairly recently, so glad we were able to catch that, and thank you for leading a very busy inspections department these days.
Thank you, sir, and we've got members of the inspections Department and Planning Department here.
Have them stand if you don't mind, yeah.
Stand.
If you don't, yeah.
And I know Jeff and Lee are both online.
Okay, just give them a round of applause. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, we will now move to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda, and council, you're aware that there are five items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion on this at this time, or is anyone wanting to pull an agenda item for further discussion? Mr. Dellinger, I recognize you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item one, Meeting Rules and Procedures, and move it to the end of new and old business.
So, council, you've heard that request. Beyond that...
May we approve consent agenda items two through, number two through number five?
Second.
All right. Motion properly made in second. If you favor the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? No, and so, remind me, we will come back to that item at the end of our regular agenda. So, with that being said, let's go to our regular agenda, and the first item we will look at here are some public hearings, and I believe Ms. Ashley Harris is with us tonight. Thank you for being here, Ms. Harris, and she's going to be the town presenter on item number one, so I recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. My name is Ashley Harris. I'm here to present Swift Creek Apartments' conditional zoning CZMP twenty-two oh four. General case information, the applicant is Swift Creek Apartments LLC. They are also the owner of the property. The property is approximately forty point eight-five acres located along US four-oh-one, also known as Fayetteville Road, and they are requesting a Tier Two conditional rezoning, which is the master sketch plan and written conditions. They are looking to rezone from the existing zoning of commercial mixed-use and residential four, which was adopted as a PUD district, it's PDC two TND conditional, to a master plan commercial mixed-use conditional CMX two sixty-one, and multifamily BMFB two sixty-one conditional, for the development of a maximum of six hundred and sixteen units and a approximately twenty thousand square foot retail commercial space. They have zoning conditions and use restrictions proposed along with their master plan. So, as I said, the site is located along Fayetteville Road. You can see just to the north, there is the Wake County subdivision Colonial Heights. The recently approved Georgia's Landing owns a bit of property along four-oh-one, although the majority of their site is off the map here. City of Raleigh also owns a portion of the land area, as well as Wake County, because this is where the Swift Creek runs through. To the south, we also have the Brookwood subdivision. This is a photo of the site from the street view, and adjacent zoning, so to the north is CMX, which is currently vacant. To the south, we have Rural Agricultural, which is owned by Swift Creek and primarily floodplain, so it's a conservation easement. To the east, there's also CMX and Wake County Residential, and then to the west, we have Rural Agricultural, which is conservation easement, and Georgia's Landing. Zoning history, there are a number of cases in the area. The one I mentioned briefly was this PDZ fourteen-oh-one by Tony Tate in two thousand and fourteen, which is where the site currently is located, so that was a planned district development that was previously approved. We also have the Georgia's Landing case from two thousand and nineteen and four-oh-one south, which rezoned in just two thousand and twenty-two, from Wake County to Garner Light Industrial. So, it is currently zoned mixed-use commercial and residential four. The TND is the traditional neighborhood development. The CMX district allows for a large number of commercial, residential, and light industrial uses, and our four districts allow for residential development up to four dwelling units per So, the way the applicant has presented its conditions is split zoning, so there is a multifamily two sixty-one district, and then the CMX two sixty-one district, so the following conditions apply to the MFB portion of the site. So, the permitted uses are limited to apartments, community centers, and public parks. The maximum density will be fourteen point five units per acre. All accessory uses will be permitted per the UDO. However, the development will conform to the master plan. Development will include amenities for the MFA-zoned area, including a community clubroom with restrooms for residents, a cyber cafe, a business center, clubroom, fitness center, and a zero-entry swimming pool. There will also be a dog park with watering station and benches, a multi-purpose lawn, and a park, pocket park. They have also committed to providing at least six petway stations located throughout the site. They are proposing twelve electric vehicle charging stations beyond what is required by the Town of Garner UDO. Their trash service will be valet-only for trash and recycling, and the hours of operation for trash collection will be limited between eight AM and five PM. They are proposing one hundred and fifty percent of required landscaping around the compactor to screen all compactor locations, and they are proposing raised intersections within the interior network of roads, as shown on the master plan. They are also proposing specialty stamped and colored asphalt at locations that are indicated on the master plan, and all lawn areas will implement warm-season grasses. They are also proposing a six-foot asphalt trail around the stormwater device, and they are committed to not using vinyl siding. They will be using cementitious siding that will vary in type and color, along with brick, shakes, board, button, or stone accents provided as decorative features, and slab-on-grade foundations with masonry extending all the way to the ground with no visible exposed slab. They are proposing to provide twelve-inch overhangs on all pitches of roofs on carriage units and apartment buildings, and windows that are not recessed will be trimmed. For the carriage units, minimum garage sizes will be twelve feet by twenty-four feet. So, as I said, they split their zoning, so this is for the CMX C two sixty-one portion. So, permitted uses are apartments, upper-story residential, a bar nightclub or tavern, office, medical office, a restaurant, sit-down restaurant, other, daycare center, gym, spa, or pool, personal or professional service, bank or financial institution, sales and retail, and a microbrewery or micro-distillery. Again, they will follow the proposed master plan and will include some amenities. There will be a public lawn associated with the CMX area for community events, including temporary shade structures, outdoor dining areas, and lighting and movable tables and chairs. They will provide an additional two petway stations in this portion of the site, and an additional three EV charging stations in this portion of the site. There will also be valet service for trash and recycling in this portion, and the hours of operation will also be eight to five. They will also provide the one hundred and fifty percent required landscaping and raised intersections at locations indicated on the master plan. They will continue the specialty paved stamped and colored asphalt, and will implement warm-season grasses only, and the multifamily apartments will not use vinyl siding and will have similar materials as to the other apartment units. They will provide twelve-inch overhangs on pitched roofs, and windows that are not recessed will be trimmed. So, the overall neighborhood character is largely characterized by the presence of Swift Creek. There are large parcels consisting of conservation easements, and existing land uses include Wake County subdivisions, industrial land uses, and religious institutions. The area is heavily influenced by US four-oh-one as the primary traffic generator. They will have about five hundred feet of frontage along Fayetteville Road, and the NCDOT has provided some average daily traffic counts that's highlighted in the report. So, the applicant did hold two neighborhood meetings. They held their first neighborhood meeting in February twenty-third of this year at the Garner Senior Center, and there were approximately three people in attendance. They held a second neighborhood meeting in March of two thousand and twenty-three at six-thirty, and there were approximately two people in attendance, and the neighborhood meeting packet was included in your staff report for you. So, the master plan general information, as I said, it's approximately forty acres total. Thirty-three point nine-eight acres of that will be the MFB district, and six point nine three acres of that would be the CMX district. So, generally speaking, there is a twenty-four thousand square foot area for the first five units in both MFB and CMX, and the minimum lot width of sixty feet per structure. Their master plan proposes four hundred and thirty-two units in the MFB, approximately fourteen point four-eight dwelling units an acre, and one hundred and twenty-eight units at approximately seventeen point nine dwelling units an acre. There will be two thousand, I'm sorry, twenty thousand approximately square feet of retail and commercial space on the first floor of that CMX district. So, there are general dimensional standards here for the MFB. We're looking at a front setback of ten feet, a side setback of six feet, and a rear setback of twenty. All setbacks increase ten feet adjacent to lots with single-family detached or duplex residential units. The maximum height is sixty feet, but there is a provision in the ordinance that allows up to seventy-two feet if additional setbacks are provided. that allows up to seventy-two feet if additional setbacks are provided, and the minimum building separation is twelve feet. For the CMX district, for the large residential structures, so the two buildings on the 401 edge of the property, the front setback is ten feet, the side setback is ten feet, and the rear setback is twenty. Again, all setbacks increase ten feet adjacent to lots with single-family detached or duplex residential units. The maximum height is forty-five feet, but there is a provision in the ordinance to allow up to fifty-seven feet with an additional setback. Building separation is twenty feet minimum. And in the CMX district, for the non-residential structures, which is the smaller building proposed in the master plan, the front setback is fifteen feet, the side setback is ten, the corner side is fifteen, and the rear is twenty-five. Again, the same ten-foot increase with adjacency to single-family detached or duplex residential units, and a maximum height of forty-five feet, which can be increased with provisions in the ordinance as well. So here is the overall master plan. So the area in pink here, this is the zoning delineation, so the front is the CMX district, and then the back is the MFB. You can see that there are a multiple of building options, so there are the traditional apartment buildings, and then also carriage units, which have garages on the first floor. In the CMX district, this building would have first-floor commercial, and then this is a restaurant space. They have provided open lawns in both districts, as well as an amenity in both districts. They are building a new eighty-foot right-of-way thoroughfare, which is the Vandora Springs Extension, which is a median-divided road that will stub out to the end of their property. And then to the south of that is their SEM with provisions for connections to future Greenway, which is being proposed by the county currently. And so they have also provided some conceptual building elevations at this time. These will be reviewed with site plan for conformity to the UDO, but at this time are considered conceptual. So you can see the typical apartment building, the restaurant brewery building, the clubhouse, and then those carriage units with garages. The project will have three points of access on the new median-divided eighty-foot right-of-way Vandora Springs Road Extension, which is proposed on the southern portion of the property, and will include a temporary forty-eight-foot turnaround. Curb gutter and sidewalk will be installed along the major thoroughfare there. The plan proposes two locations for a future connection to the Swift Creek Corridor Greenway. The tree canopy requirement is a sliding scale from eighteen to twenty percent, and the master plan envisions twenty percent, with eight point two acres being preservation. There are perimeter buffers required, a fifteen-foot perimeter buffer along the northern property line, a street yard buffer along Vandora Springs Road Extension at the southern boundary, and a forty-five-foot perimeter buffer at the remaining southern edge. A combination of forty-five-foot and fifteen-foot perimeter buffer is required to the east, and a street buffer is required along US forty, 401, and street trees must be provided approximately every forty feet along all roadways. The total open space required is ten percent, or four point nine, oh-nine acres, and the master plan envisions an excess of that, but with no more than thirty percent of that being tree preservation. Active open space is also required at twenty-five percent of the total open space required, which totals out to one point oh-two acres, and the master plan envisions a minimum of two acres of active open space. The open space areas will be maintained by a property manager, and will be met through a combination of qualifying conservation areas and recreational spaces, including swimming pool, dog park, multi-purpose field, private trails, and private parks. So on the very southern portion of the property, there is some floodplain associated with Swift Creek that's highlighted in green here, and there is a buffer associated with that. This part of the plan is reserved for stormwater management and tree preservation, with the potential for pedestrian connections to the future Greenway. The site will be served by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer, and water will connect to existing service in US 401, and a line will be extended through the new Vandora Springs Extension Room. A new sanitary sewer pump station will be installed on-site, and sewer lines will be extended to adjacent and upstream properties per Raleigh policy. At site plan and plot review, we will re-verify the lighting and the stormwater management to meet UDO requirements, and that the water lines and hydrant spaces meet fire code and Raleigh water rules, and all landscaping and parking will be re-verified. The next steps will be for the Planning Commission to create a judgment on consistency with the currently adopted plans, and then it will come back to you for your final action. So for tonight, staff recommends that once town council has heard comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that conditional zoning request CZMP 2204 be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. And I do believe in this portion of your staff report, it might have the wrong case number, but it is 2204. So here's the master plan, and the applicant is here with a brief presentation.
Okay. Before you leave the podium, let me see if the council has any questions for you. Thank you for the, for the very good report and the information that you shared. So I'll start at my right and see if Ms. Behringer has any questions. Okay, Mr. Dillinger.
Mr. Vance.
Yes. Just a point of clarification in reference to the neighborhood meetings that were held this year. Notice that you said approximate number. How many citizens attended the, the meeting?
I believe it was two and three that signed in, but I don't know whether those were couples, that only one person signed in. Staff doesn't attend those meetings personally, but I believe the applicant is here and could answer that question.
Right.
Yep.
And Mr. Matthews, I'll go to you, sure.
Yes, just one question. On the sewer coming in, you mentioned Vandora Extension. As the map here, where is it coming in at on this property? I'm just trying to get a...
I'm sorry that this is a very small diagram down here, but I believe it's to the north, but the applicant should be able to speak to that as well.
Okay. That's all.
And Ms. Singleton.
Ms. Harris, this is a property that has been approved more than once by the Town of Garner for previous subdivisions. This is the front part of this, front part of that property?
Probably so, yes.
Okay. All right. I'll ask the applicant a couple of other questions about that. Thank you.
Okay.
And just so you know, Jeff and Leah are available for questions on teams as well.
You should have noted that they are available online if we need them, so. Mr. Dallinger, I'll go back to you one more time. Ms. Harris, sure.
A quick question about there being six hundred units, and there's only one way in or out, and how is that conform, particularly when looking at the adjacent properties and the Vandora Road Extension that would probably never be actually connected because it crosses the City of Raleigh property? How does that density and that number of units, we're only affording one entrance and exit on 401?
So I think, and Jeff and Leah can jump in if I'm incorrect here, but I believe because that Vandora Springs Extension is going to be a publicly accessible road, that that counts as their primary access points. So I believe they have three points of access off of that road, and then they're also providing a stub to the future property to the north, which would become an additional access. So I believe even though it's one off of Fayetteville Road, that past precedent says that this new road could serve as the access, since it's something that the town is requiring that they build.
Yes, that's sort of, for the foreseeable future, there's only one entry point into this very large subdivision. While the Vandora Road Extension may appear on our transportation plan, I think there have been changes in some of the ownership of the land connecting. It's not developable. We'd have to develop it or build the road, so I do have concerns about that many units with only one actual point of access, so.
Yeah, and I think FIRE has looked at this plan too, so they might be able to speak to access as well, but it's just based on past precedent how it's been approved.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harris. At this time, I'll be happy to recognize the applicant or persons who want to speak in conjunction with the application. If you'll just give your name and address, you know, you can use the podium in the center if you like. That's the one we usually ask folks to use.
Good afternoon, Mayor Marshburn, members of council, Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners, here on behalf of the applicant KDM Development Corp. This is a Tier Two conditional zoning request to facilitate a mixed-use development of approximately forty acres. Ms. Harris gave a very thorough presentation, so I apologize in advance for any repetitiveness, but we'll get through it as efficiently as we can. So just a little background on the development team. As mentioned, KDM Development Corp. is the applicant, based Nixon Kennedy Consulting Engineers, helped with the rezoning application and the site layout. Marty Bizel is here and will touch on the master plan and the site layout following my brief presentation. Next slide, please. Raimi Kempin Associates performed the traffic impact analysis, and client design architects compiled the building elevations that you saw a few moments ago. Next slide, please. So the property is predominantly zoned R4, although the sixty-two oh one and sixty-three oh one Fayetteville Road properties are currently zoned CMX. The site is bordered by CMX zoning to our north and to our east, with the rural agricultural zoning districts to our south and to our west. Next slide, please. Here's a closer view of the three parcel assemblage. You can see that dirt road running from Fayetteville Road through the property and to the adjacent parcel to our east. That is sort of the basis of the road extension, although we are shifting it north to avoid the floodplains and to accommodate that stormwater control measure. Next slide, please. So the request would amend the zoning map for these three properties from a mix of R4 and CMX to a mix of multifamily B and CMX, in order to develop that multifamily community with the commercial uses along Fayetteville Road. Next slide, please. So the Garner Forward Future Land Use Map designates the majority of the property as mixed-density neighborhood center, and the remainder as the Neighborhood Commerce Center. The MDC states that it may include a mix of residential uses with incidental commercial uses integrated within. The goal is to create a self-sustaining community that serves the needs of the residents therein. The Neighborhood Commerce Center emphasizes smaller commercial centers that are within close walking distance to those residential uses, and our requested master plan includes a mix of both residential and commercial uses that bring those residents up to Fayetteville Road, and also attract nearby residents as well, and we contend that this rezoning is consistent with the Garner Forward Future Land Use Map. Next slide, please. The draft Future Land Use Map calls for a residential-only development pattern along this stretch of Fayetteville Road, but it still calls for a mix of housing types and a mix of residential densities. And while this master plan is less consistent with the draft Future Land Use Map, the proposed master plan is predominantly residential, and it does offer those commercial amenities that will again attract residents both to this site to live, and it will also attract nearby neighbors to enjoy those commercial uses as well. Next slide, please. So just a brief overview, the master plan calls for six hundred and sixteen apartment units, while respecting the property's proximity to Swift Creek. Forty-four percent of this site will remain as open space, and almost half of that open space will be dedicated as tree preservation area. Next slide. The resulting density over the entirety of this site is approximately fifteen units per acre. Again, the multifamily B density is around fourteen and a half. The CMX district, we did not cap the density on that district, and that permits up to seventeen point eight units per acre, which brings us to that overall fifteen units per acre. And as mentioned, our stormwater control facility will have one, and it will be closest to Swift Creek in order to capture all of that runoff and discharge and treat that stormwater into Swift Creek. Now I'll let Marty Bizel come up and speak to the master plan and the site layout, but appreciate your time. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. My name is Marty Bizel. With Bass Nixon Kennedy Engineers, sixty-three ten Chapel Hill Road in Raleigh. Ashley did an outstanding job. She stole a lot of my thunder, and I do not want to bore you with repetitiveness, so I'm going to speak basically to the site plan. I would say this is a very collaborative, this has been a collaborative effort to get to this point. We have had awesome correspondence and meetings with the town staff. They have offered a lot of input along with our architects and, and ourselves, and as well as the owner, to get to this point. I would be lying if I told you that what we started out looked like this, but it doesn't, and I think this is a much better product, and we have, we've really appreciated the effort that the staff has put forward in to getting to this point. But as Ashley has already mentioned, there's approximately thirteen buildings plus clubhouse and restaurant, one of those being a mixed-use building. Our architect is going to get up in a minute and kind of go over those elevations with you, specifically. A couple of things just to note, the Vandora Springs Extension plays a major part of the site plan, and as Worth just mentioned, and I know Mr. Singleton just mentioned the old Swift Creek Station project that was, actually began construction, and some of that infrastructure is actually in the ground out there now. We've reviewed those plans and have noted that infrastructure that's in, and obviously that street, Vandora Springs Extension, was started, and what you see on the aerials is where that was going to go. The culverts were, they carried the storm drainage down to, Swift Creek is actually there in the ground now, but we've, we have looked at it very hard and decided that we needed to take that completely out of the floodplain. So it does have a little bit of a bend there where you see that, that curve, but we felt it was important to, to get that road completely out of the floodplain. Just mentioned that we do have the stormwater control measure, and that will handle the stormwater control for water quality as far as water quality and continuation to control the runoff for the entire site. Just to the right of that, you'll see in the little green area there, there is a pump station proposed, and we've been working with the City of Raleigh, probably talking to them close to a year now, to try to work with the city and Georgia's Landing, but the, the intent and the proposal is to construct a pump station that will be built to City of Raleigh standards, ultimately maintained for maintenance by the City of Raleigh. Pump station will be located just to the right of the SEM, and then the force main will run up along Vandora Springs Extension to Fayetteville Road, and then head north. At that point, we will tie into the Georgia's Landing pump station. The future plans are that this pump station would one day take the flow from Georgia's Landing, and that pump station would be abandoned, and everything would flow to ours. So that is the, the ultimate goal here. The City of Raleigh has bought into that, and I think they're very pleased that'll be one less pump station that they would have to maintain. So they're very happy with that part. And we obviously, I want to touch on the, the questions that were brought forward, if I can. As far as the neighborhood meetings, we actually had four at the first meeting. One person did not sign in. He got there kind of late, and then we had two at the, at the second one. They were very small, but we, it actually worked out very well. We were able to have a nice interaction between us, and I know some of the neighbors that were here for both of those meetings are here tonight, and so they were, they were quite productive. As far as the... far as the, I think there was a question about the access. We, we are providing basically three access points, obviously, one to Fayetteville Road, obviously, down to the southeast for a right-of-way dedication of Vandorah Springs Road to the property line that will eventually, hopefully, be extended out as the transportation plan calls for. And then we are showing a stub, although it's a private street, to the north, but we are offering cross-access to that property to the north, and if that ever develops, there would be a, an access point at that point. So from the fire standpoint, we did get a comment about the turnaround, and you'll see there is a bulb on the southwest or southeast corner of Vandorah Springs to accommodate the fire truck turnaround. So, and we have, although it, we do not have a timeframe, but we have talked with property owners to the east about potentially extending and developing that property at some point in time. So we do feel that one day, I couldn't tell you when, but one day that Vandorah Springs will be extended to the east. So with that, I'll turn it over to our architects, Klein Design, and they'll go through the architectural elevations for you.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. Kevin Williams, Klein Design, one of the project designers. And what you see here is the mixed-use building that fronts Fayetteville Road down at the bottom of the page there. And then above that is another elevation of that building. It's kind of an L shape. And really, just overall, the architectural kind of language is kind of a contemporary vernacular theme. So you, you'll notice probably on some of these that they'll have some familiar residential kind of forms. It is a big development, and we had, as Marty was stating, great collaboration with, with staff and then our, you know, of course, our working relationship with each other to develop a multitude of building types. We felt that was important, especially in a big development, to have various types of buildings, various types of living units to provide that for people. And it also just creates for a more dynamic product overall and development overall. I'm not sure how many of these are on there, but yeah. So there you see some of the vernacular forms kind of paired with some more contemporary forms, but we feel that it creates a nice dynamic facade that fronts Fayetteville Road. We felt that to be important. We have that approximately five hundred feet or so, and so we wanted to make that something that as, as one is kind of driving by on Fayetteville Road, Highway four oh one, that, that you see that, it kind of stands out, it kind of draws you to it. And that was the purpose there with the remaining kind of residential buildings are kind of tucked behind in the rest of the development. This is just a small conceptual design for the restaurant building that exists behind the mixed-use building, kind of on that lawn, and we wanted to just create something, envision something that was a bit dynamic, that's kind of stands out and creates a, a nice kind of memorable space and to be around, and one that, that hopefully would both draw people in and then also be something that's memorable and that they would want to come back to. Next slide. This is one of the apartment buildings that, that exists in the back of the development. Again, we wanted these buildings to have different, different sizes, a little bit different language, but there is some cohesion within the materiality, within some of the material palette, the colors, et cetera, just so that it's all tied in. So it doesn't look too foreign, it kind of fits together, but again, it provides some variety as well. These are just the end elevations of that building. And you can kind of start to see how these buildings just kind of speak to one another. These are the carriage units, a little smaller unit, but these are fairly popular and do provide that kind of variety of living space with the garage and the living units above. This is our clubhouse, again, traditional forms, it's kind of similar material palette to tie everything in. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We may need all of you to come back up at some point for questions, but go right ahead. Tell us who yours are.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Stevenson. I'm an engineer with Ramey Kemp Associates, and our firm prepared a traffic impact analysis study for the project, for the rezoning. And as we typically do, work closely with town staff and NCDOT throughout the process. That traffic study has been submitted, it's been reviewed and approved, and there are some turn lanes and potential signalization identified as part of the traffic study. And I won't go into a lot of detail on it, but I'll be happy to answer questions about it as needed. But I do want to say that I was excited to see that part of this Vandorah Springs extension would be completed as part of this, this project. I think that's a big, real big deal for the town, as certainly everybody knows, we need another east, kind of east-west connection through this area, so that is a big deal. And the NCDOT has picked up on the fact that there will likely at some point need to be a traffic signal at four oh one and this Vandorah Springs extension. So also excited to see that, whether that happens with our project or at some point, but they, they have recognized that as well. So I'll just, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all have about the traffic study.
Okay. Was anybody else going to present for the applicant? Okay. So I'll ask council if you want to start with this gentleman and work our way back, or is there someone else you'd really ask a question of first?
A question for Mr. Stevenson?
Yes, sir.
In reference to the Vandorah Springs extension, that the portion that's being constructed as a part, possibly as a part of this project, what is the cross-section? Is it two lane, four lane, or is it two lane?
I believe it's two lane with a median, and I think that median may be an important factor as well with the, the like emergency, emergency response. There was obviously concern about the second point of access, but in many cases with that median, it allows you to really separate that traffic flow. So if there is, is an issue at the intersection, you can kind of close down that one and use the other lane to get in or out as needed for emergency response. So that, I wanted to add that, that would help with that concern as well.
I'm going to go back and forth. So Mr. Matthews, I'll go to you next.
Nothing running at this time, Mr. Matthews.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Dillinger.
So the signalization is not currently part of this project?
It may be. If there's traffic, enough traffic there, we will have to put a traffic signal in. Yet, the DOT doesn't like to commit the signals upfront. So if we were to go put that traffic signal in before we even opened the first building, you know, then we're stopping traffic on four oh one for one or two cars to come out, and they, they don't like to do that. So what they like to do is say, we want to get this thing underway, get some traffic counts, and see if it is warranted. And if it's warranted, you know, we would have to put that in.
So currently, it's only, it would be right in, right out?
Left in, yes, yes, sir. Left in, right in, right out.
Can you go southbound out of the development?
To go south on four oh one, you would have to make a right and then go up into a U-turn.
How far is that, and how much storage is that? And I ask because I drove down four oh one recently and a lot of construction already, and I was trying to imagine all those people coming out of the two thousand, going north to turn around to go to five forty. So where's the turnaround, and how much storage is there for that southbound traffic?
Yeah, there's, we have looked at that, but the next U-turn is up at Georgia's Landing, and so that's, that's being accounted for there with that. And we, one of the things that was identified is the, the need to extend that lane. There's a left turn lane there that would, so that it would accommodate the U-turning traffic there.
That's not a signalized intersection there?
That is not, as far as, yeah, as far as I'm aware, is not, not signalized, would not be signalized.
Since that improvement would, that lane, storage extension, would that be part of this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Perringer, anything? Mr. Singleton?
Mr. Dillinger asked the questions that I had because I was reading it, we talked about construction management recommending a signal, but obviously, you're right, you don't build one building and put it in there. You wait till it's whatever percentage that they deem that it needs to happen. Now, you mentioned about going up and doing the U-turn, you're supposed to extend, I reckon, a hundred twenty-five meter, a hundred twenty-five feet, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir.
So when this gets signalized, they still have to go up into the U-turn. You will not be able to make the movement out and head south. You will not be able to cross over, or will you?
That's correct. You're correct. They would, yeah, just because the signal goes in, you would still not be able to turn left from the Vandorah Springs extension onto four oh one to travel south. You would not be able to do that.
This is part of that redesign of four oh one to make it traffic flowing smoother and so forth and not having everyone stop at a stoplight all the time.
Yes, sir. You know, they have the project a little further north to really implement that. So this is a way that they can, they can sort of get ahead of it by having developments and, and anything new that comes in along this section of four oh one, go ahead and implement that, that strategy for access management.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anthony, I guess you, yes, sir?
Oh, you sure did. I got another question. In reference to the question that came up earlier, in reference to having one access off of four oh one into the development, but coming down, what is Vandorah Springs considered? What type thoroughfare is it considered to be?
That's a good question. I may have to, I don't recall off the top of my head. I may have to, may have to ask staff what that would be considered. Let me see if I have it. I don't recall off the top of my head what that would be called. I don't know that I have it handy.
I can, I can come in from a staff perspective if that would help.
Absolutely.
So we would consider Vandorah Springs a major collector, which can either have a median divided or a center lane. So further down Vandorah Springs, of course, it's just got the center turn lane, but here it would have the median option.
Okay, all right. So I guess I'm looking at the, based upon the earlier question about having two accesses with it being a major collector and having three access, three, three points of access off of Vandorah Springs, that it is, and it's going through the technical review that is okay relative to the emergency response?
That is my understanding, but if anybody says anything differently, that's, that's fine. It's my understanding.
Yeah, it's been reviewed by our inspections department, who does our fire code inspection. So Paul might be able to speak to that, but.
Evening again. So we would look at that major collector with the divide, or the median as, just like you had said, if, if an intersection or lane gets shut down, they can use the opposing lane to still gain access to one of those three.
Thank you.
I'm going to go back to Mr. Matthews. I think, did you have anything still? No?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mr. Stevenson, and we'll see if we have other persons you want to talk to. Anybody on council have any further questions for him? Okay, thank you very much. And council, let me see, I'll ask you of the other presenters. Anybody want to speak to Mr. Bizel further? Did I say that? Bizel, Bizel? Thank you. Okay.
I may include here, I have a question for staff. What is the, I know the answer, but what's the timeline for this Vandorah Road extension to actually connect to Vandorah Springs and provide an egress point for this subdivision?
Leah might be able to speak to that, but I don't know if there's a build-out date right now.
Okay.
It is not. I mean, it's not on any plan as far as having a year, nothing that's funded. So right now, I think it's being built as development occurs. Any portion that would have to be done publicly has not been scheduled at this time.
Thank you. I also have another question, and there's another stub road that they're getting credit for on the southern part, but that goes straight into Swift Creek and flood plain, and will probably never be developed or connect to anything. So we have two of these access points that in the foreseeable future will never provide any sort of access, exit access for folks. So I'm just curious.
Are you referring to this arrow here?
No, the one, the one higher up, that one.
This one? So the stub that they're actually getting credit for, I think, is this one to the parcel to the north.
Only one, for six hundred units, they're getting credit for that one stub and a cul-de-sac. And there's only one way in and out. That is giving me a lot of concern about, I'm always on the other side of the connectivity argument, but it seems problematic from a safety standpoint, particularly when we've tried to force connections in a lot of other places. My other question, I guess, may be for Mr. Bizel. It's a, it's a statement, and it's a question. The density of this, first of all, the product is very good. It looks great, and it fits, and it's, you know, the density is extremely high for the, for Swift Creek land management area. And I know that is, there's differing interpretations on residential versus commercial, but the residential uses are typically very low, two and a half units, et cetera. I'm a little concerned with the, in the, I imagine the storm management, stormwater management is set to a hundred-year flood plain capacity. Is that what we require?
So for the stormwater management, we are following what the current UDO requires now. So it would attenuate up to the twenty-five-year storm, and we know when we model these that there is some benefit beyond that. And typically, we try to provide as much storage as we can. We try to hit those meet, those minimums at twenty-five, but I, I would say we would definitely be more than that. But we will definitely meet the minimums for sure. And we, we obviously will meet all the water quality requirements for sure.
I worked in hurricane redevelopment years ago and looked at several five-hundred-year flood events, which is
Yes.
counterintuitive since they're five-hundred-year flood events.
And we do model these to pass the hundred-year storm, to make sure the emergency spillways are adequate.
And I guess that's sort of my, I want to probably further conversation on expanding that with this level of density.
Sure.
And that close to Swift Creek, that any overage or spillage is not going to be contained, and this is all, the whole point of Swift Creek.
Absolutely.
Land management is to preserve
Absolutely.
the water supply. So I think there may be some more conversations on expanding that capacity if we're going to maintain this level of density. That gives me just a little bit of
Yeah, understood. And I'll speak, if I could speak just a little bit to the Swift Creek management plan. We, we obviously are under that seventy percent impervious threshold. We're well below that. And as far as the density goes, we have capped it at fourteen point eight five for the majority of the site, where the apartments are. And looking at the MFB as it currently stands now, it, by right, if it were zoned as MFB, the density would be much higher than what our fourteen point five. So we feel like although we're asking for MFB, we are capping it at a much less dense, density than what the MFB would allow under the code. So I think one thing that, it sounds like a lot, but when you look at the amount of open space that we, we have, it's, that's how our density is lower than, than what it might seem to be. So as far as the fourteen and a half per acre.
I should have, I guess, I could add this caveat a little earlier. Those of us who are here at the town know Leah Harris, our town engineer. She's the voice that others in the audience or those watching might have heard. Just wanted to clarify who that person is speaking. I don't think she identified herself, I'm not sure, but Ms. Leah Harris, our town engineer. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir. I have two questions. One, you said that, I know when we approved this in previous developments, it went two, two across the railroad, and we, I believe the last one, we even tied in an emergency access through Colonial Heights neighborhood to one of the streets, much to the chagrin of the neighbors. And that's understandable. So the property directly east of this is another property owner.
Right.
Okay. And right at this time, there's nothing that's been talked about extending. I'm just looking at the extension of the road because the issue with the future Vandorah Springs extension is, one, I didn't think we could build it because years ago, they told us the beavers had dammed everything up and created so much of a, I think, a water issue or stormwater issue that we couldn't cross it. Now we can cross it, we just had to cross a railroad, which are costs
Right.
millions and millions of dollars. So I don't, you know, I don't see that, that happening. So that's why I was curious to how far that, that extension could be taken.
Right.
On the part, the five hundred On the part, the 500, my feet that front along Highway 401, would, so DOT will only grant one access to this project. You couldn't go to the very north up there and have a right out as a second way out. I'm just sitting here thinking, how can you get another access? Because I don't think any of us in our lifetime will see Vandoor Springs Extension get built. Just my opinion, unless we're going to start growing money trees. So I'm just looking at that, is there another way to access off 401 just to write out of this development?
Ronald, you have an opinion on that? And while he's coming up, Mr. Singleton, I'll just address the, and we don't know if that property owner will, when he'll sell or want to develop, but we have been in discussions with him over the years. And I know that may happen one day. Right now, we're just not there, but we have talked with him several times. And so we'll continue those conversations.
Just curious, because I know how it came before, but
Absolutely.
there were different, there are different property owners.
Yeah, I can tell you know the site very well. And we really, that at-grade railroad crossing is very precious. And, you know, the railroad don't, don't grant a lot of those. So we're holding on to that, that, because we need that at-grade crossing to make it all work, you know, to get through there, so.
Well, I can remember the first development, and Mr. Matthews was on the council, and maybe Ms. Behringer and Mr. Marshman, where the permit expired for two years, they'd come back and we extended it at least three or four times.
To keep it alive, yes.
We kept the project alive for about 10 years.
That's right.
One time.
That's right. I'll let Ronald speak to DOTs.
Well, what I was going to say about that is that was not really discussed with DOT, but we'd be happy to ask them about the possibility of having some kind of access there, even if it's limited, you know, to ride-in, ride-out, or emergency vehicles or ride-out only or something. We'd be happy to ask about that.
I just mentioned that because I understand the divided median helps, traffic goes both ways. But let's say we have a bad storm and there are trees all over that road and no one can get out, it's at the entrance. And fire department, emergency people got to get there. But I mean, if you've had a tornado go through, and I mean, you can't access the property. And so that's, I see where Mr. Behringer's coming from, because we've talked about this. And I also understand staff's talking about it's going out on a divided median road. But if something happens at the front of that intersection, I mean, it's a bad way. I'm just thinking of another way out, just looking at this. If y'all can bring this discussion up, I think that would be something that might be a little more acceptable in trying to think of an emergency exit. I would use that, you know, because it's just, whatever it could give is just right out. At least people can get out.
Right. We'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Let me see if Ms. Behringer has anything.
No, that's, I'm good with Mr. Singleton.
All right. Thanks, sir. Counsel, any other person you want to hear from at this time? I'm going to recognize anybody in the public, public who may want to speak on this issue, but anything else for the applicant? Anybody? Everybody good? Okay. All right, thank you. So are there persons, this is a public hearing, are there persons who came here this evening for the express purpose of wanting to speak to this issue? If so, would you let me know at this time? Okay, don't see anybody motioning to me, so nobody from the public, okay? That's the town's presentation, and we're covered there. And so counsel, what say you? Or I guess I'm ready to close this public hearing and ask for a motion. Anything else? All right. I'll close the public hearing. And the, as has been noted, this customarily would be referred to the planning commission for, for a further hearing, and then we'll come back to this, counsel, for a final decision.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made in second. All in favor of the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Opposition, would you vote no?
No.
Okay. Chair would note that there were four affirmative votes and one negative vote, so the matter passes and we'll refer this to the planning commission. We don't have a date, well, we leave that date a little open until after the planning commission has heard it, right? Where's mine? Yeah.
Yeah. It'll probably go to the planning commission in May, but after that, it's
Prepare to bring it back. Okay. Okay.
Just a quick comment, they know is, we'd like some more discussion on the stormwater retention. I think that's the access and that are the two sort of bigger issues for me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. And let's see, Ms. Harris, are you the next person up on the next item, right?
Yes.
So you still have the floor, so go right ahead.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing with your presentation. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate your time. Thank, yeah.
This is CZMP 2209, US 70 Guy Road Commercial. It is also a conditional rezoning request. The applicant is Andy Perilio of Circle K Stores, Inc. There are about four or five owners here. And the location is along US 70 East near Guy Road, although it's not the corner, but it's the piece right next to the corner parcel there. The tract size is 3.53 acres approximately, and this is a tier-two conditional rezoning request to rezone from single-family residential R40 to community retail. So under the old ordinance, CRC 269 conditional for the development of a convenience store with fuel sales. Zoning conditions are proposed that restrict the range of uses to a list of 11 possible uses and provide architectural commitments that address appearance and quality of materials and constructions. So here is the site location, and as I mentioned, so it is not the very corner parcel, but the parcels just adjacent to it, including these three single-family units along Guy Road. And then the, on the corner is the Los Carolinas Grocery and Grill. There is other existing single-family residential that would remain on Guy Road. And the most closest development is the industrial and warehouse uses to the north. So here is a picture of what the site currently looks like off of US 70. And this is a picture of the site from Guy Road. Adjacent land use to the north is the light industrial and warehousing that I mentioned, which is the Garner Commerce Center. To the south is CMX and Rural Agricultural for Los Carolinas Grocery and Grill and vacant parcels in the CMX to the south. To the east is also CMX and Rural Agricultural, and to the west is light industrial and rural agricultural. There were a few rezoning cases in the vicinity. In 2020, there was a rezoning for S&amp;D properties from R40 to SBC 233. And then there was also the Garner Industrial rezoning in 2020 from industrial to SBC 230. The site was zoned residential 40 and is now rural agricultural since the July rezoning that was townwide. The RA District allows residential dwelling units at a maximum rate of one dwelling unit per acre. This is within the commercial highway overlay district. At the time of smittle, that overlay was known as the US 7401 thoroughfare overlay district. And it has additional development standards applicable to non-residential development, but none of the prohibited uses are included in this proposal. So here is the list of 11 permissible uses, including medical office, other office, restaurants, a convenience store without fuel sales, convenience store with fuel sales, and personal service-oriented use, hair salon, barber shops, beauty shops, and a veterinarian or a kennel indoors only. So there are other zoning conditions that are proposed. The exterior building materials for the principal buildings will be limited to brick with a minimum of two color tones. There'll be simulated stone, fiber cement cap, ACM panels, aluminum awning, and other aluminum storefronts. Each building will contain at least of those, three of those materials, and corrugated metal panels and vinyl siding will not be installed on any building or building exterior. Each principal structure will have simulated stone water table to take up the base of the building to at least a 36-inch height. And architectural elements like towers, pilasters, and overhangs will be provided for the principal structure to enhance vertical and horizontal building articulation. They will provide at least two architectural elements that were listed. The principal and accessory building heights will not exceed 25 feet or one story. And so then they've broken out their additional architectural conditions based on which building they are referring to. So for the convenience store, the front facade will be primarily 60% brick and two tones and 20% simulated, simulated stone, 18% storefront, and will have two entry doors. The side facades will be 70% simulated brick and two tones and 25% simulated stone. And the rear facade will be 70% brick and 20% stone. The front facade of the principal building will contain at least a tower element above the 18 to 6-inch roofline with a minimum of 8-inch wall offset in the plane of each building corner and at the overhang, architectural fixture three feet above the 18-foot 6-inch roofline with a minimum of 36-inch offset in a plane that clearly demarcates the building primary access as, and proposed main signage. The side and rear facades of the principal building will have similar conditions to ensure some architectural variety there. And the proposed rear facade will have two tower elements on each, on each corner, and two pilasters less than 35 feet apart with the wall plane with 36-inch stone water table base. The proposed side facade to the southeast will contain similar elements. For the secondary pedestrian access along any side facades, a metal awning will be provided to demarcate the access, and the color and materials will be compatible with the building overall. Each column element of the fuel and diesel canopy structures will contain simulated stone to the height of eight feet and simulated brick for the remainder height. Color and materials will be compatible with the principal building, and the overall tones will be earth tones to unify building color and maintain harmony and style. The accessory structure is the trash enclosure. The material will be 100% simulated brick with one tone and all facades, and have gates to match in the colored Java. The fence around the SCM will be a commercial-grade black aluminum picket-type fence, and three ornamental trees above the code minimum will be provided. Outdoor seating and an amenity area will be provided with two tables with seats. The overall community character is largely characterized by US 70. I'm sorry, this looks like it wasn't updated from the last one. But the project will have about 2,000 feet from frontage along US Highway 70 East, and NC DOT has collected some traffic counts generally, which were provided in your staff report. There was a neighborhood meeting held in December of last year, and there were approximately nine people in attendance. And that neighborhood meeting should have been provided to you in your packet as well. So as I said, the area is approximately 3.53 acres total, and the building size is 5,200 square feet. The minimum lot width is 60 feet, and the minimum lot area is 6,000 square feet with the front setback of 35 feet, a side setback of 10 feet or 15 feet, a rear setback of zero or 25 combined, and a corner side setback of 35 feet. The maximum building height is 40 feet, although they have proposed a maximum of one story. So this is the proposed master plan. As you can see, they have proposed a SCM on this side of the property. They are also providing a cross-access to the north, as well as a cross-access to the existing grocery store. They will have fuel pumps and canopy, as well as a store with pedestrian access around and sidewalks throughout. And then they are providing an amenity area here, which will have the two tables with chairs. And then there is landscaping and screening requirements as well. They are providing a road widening along Guy Road, as well as along US 70 with road improvements. And these are some of the conceptual building elevations that they have provided at this time. Again, these will be reviewed with the site plan for conformity with the UDO 100%, but at this point are considered conceptual. And they also provided conceptual building elevations of the gas canopy and the trash enclosure. So the project will have one point of access along US 70 and one point along Guy Road, and the cross-access will be coordinated with adjacent proposed development to the west and the existing commercial to the east. Additional curb, pavement, gutter, and sidewalks will also be required. The tree canopy requirement was a sliding scale of 12 to 14%, which was the rule at the time of smittle, which will be met. The master plan envisions a 12% minimum preservation with the balance to be met by new canopy plantings. The perimeter buffers, there is a street yard buffer along US 70 Highway East of seven and a half feet, a 45-foot buffer along Guy Road, a 15-foot perimeter buffer along the northern boundary, a 15-foot perimeter buffer along the southeast boundary, and additional screening of outdoor operations, fuel sales required by the US 7401. The street trees will be provided approximately every 40 feet along all roadways. There are no FEMA-designated floodplanes and no buffered streams within the project boundary. And the development will meet the UDO requirements for stormwater control for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. The site will be serviced by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer Infrastructure, and water will connect to the existing service in US 70 Highway East. And a new water main will be installed along the property frontage on Guy Road. Sewer service will tie into existing lines near Widespan Drive through an off-site sewer extension. And again, when this project is reviewed in the future, it will be reviewed for the lighting and street and common areas for the UDO requirements. We will re-verify the stormwater management devices, as well as the infrastructure and any landscaping and parking requirements. So the next steps will be for this project to be sent to Planning Commission for plan consistency, before returning to you for your final action on reasonableness. So at this time, staff recommends that once counsel has heard comments and concerns from the general public, that the requests be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. And the applicant is here and has prepared a few slides for you as well.
Again, thank you very much, Ms. Harris. Let me see if counsel has questions for you. Mr. Singleton, I'll start with you.
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Behringer? Okay, Mr. Vance?
No questions at this time.
Okay. So we will hear from the applicant at this time. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of council. Toby Coleman with Smith &amp; Anderson, 150 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the applicant, Circle K. I, we are not proposing 600 apartments. We are proposing a gas station, so we have a much shorter presentation for you, and we will be available for questions. Ms. Harris has also covered most of it here, so I'm going to avoid being repetitive. These are the site, I think, if you go to the next slide, you guys have seen this. I'll just note this, so, you know, the, as far as the surrounding zoning, and, you know, you've got a vacant lot here. The site, you know, the Garner, I'm going to pull out my notes here, but you've got industrial to the north. You have the Garner Commerce Center there to the north, which I believe is under construction now. You have a store, the Los Carolinas store, that's between this site and the actual intersection of US 70 Business and Guy Road. And then sort of catty corner on the other corner, that other triangle across the way is a Speedway gas station. So you've got already some, some commercial and industrial there. The proposal here is, is for a gas station. Since Circle K is the applicant, you can sort of guess what kind of convenience store it'll be. The, this site is about three-quarters of a mile from three-quarters of a mile from the anticipated 540 US 70 Business interchange. That's US 70 Business. We're not talking about the mega, mega interchange here. It is, we put up the current comprehensive plan there. As you can see, although the site is zoned RA currently, it is anticipated by the current comp plan that it would be sort of a combination of light industrial and corridor commercial, and it is in a employment center. That is also consistent with the comp plan that you guys are currently working on. I think the, that comp plan, the draft that's on the website, anticipates this area being entirely sort of a retail mix, I believe, yeah, retail center. I'll just note that the, the staff report, since it wasn't fully quoted in terms of the surrounding land uses in the slides, I'll just note that the staff report noted that, you know, there is a mix of uses, but the industrial use is the most prominent use in the area. And with that, we are available for questions. I will note that Andy Priolo of Circle K is here with me, as, as is Rick Baker and Jacob Dooley with Timmins. So if you have any questions that I can answer, which I presume are probably many, we have the people who are here and ready to answer them.
Okay. Coleman, then there probably will be some. I'll start again with Mr. Vance this time, if he has any.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, we'll go back to you again.
Nothing at this time.
None for you? Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
The widening of Guy Road will be along all the frontage of that property, the way I'm looking at it here on the site plane that we have. That's correct.
Yeah, and you may, staff, we have it in a small version. The staff presentation had the best, I think had a better sort of, yeah, there you go. So it'll, it'll be the frontage of, the widening of Guy Road will be along the frontage of that property, which doesn't go all the way to US Business 70.
Yes, okay. Because that, that intersection is a lot of crossover traffic. Garner Road that crosses over to go down to the Development 9 Guy Road down in Johnston County. So the improvements will be along the frontage in a dedicated turn lane all the way into the property.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And a sidewalk as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Barrett? Okay. Cut off easy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Rick Baker with the Timmins Group. Mr. Singleton, I just wanted to come add, we're widening Guy Road along the frontage, but have a right turn lane proposed into the site and a left turn lane proposed into the site as well. And the TIA was done, and these were the improvements that the TIA recommended.
Very good.
Great. Thank you.
I'm just thinking, I know how traffic is out there now, but the right turn lane will, going to the site, will take, take all that traffic. It won't be an issue with what is currently there, the current traffic. Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Well, he's here. Anybody have any questions here? You're good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else plan to make a presentation, or you're available for questions maybe only? Counsel, do you have?
We are, we are done. We are available for questions.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Ms. Harris, from you?
Nothing else at this time.
Okay. Are there persons here who came for the express purpose of speaking on this matter? Are there any? Okay. Speaking, hearing none. Counsel, I'm ready to close the hearing. Any discussion you want to have amongst yourself, we can do that. But anything else from Ms. Harris? Okay, thank you.
Just a qualification for the, on the master plan, the right turn lane in on Guy Road, and just to reiterate, the improvements only, they start at the property line. They don't extend any further. Okay. You just kind of misrepresented a little bit with the gray. It goes further than the property line. So I just wanted to be clear that it's not going further.
So the full width of the improvements will be along the frontage of the property. The tapers back into existing asphalt will extend beyond the property lines. I think that's what you may be seeing there.
Yep. That's even better.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right. Going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion on this matter.
Move that conditional rezoning request, CZMP 22-09, be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance, the motion, and Ms. Barrett, you're second to the motion. Any other discussion before we vote, counsel? Okay. If you favor the motion that's before you, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you are opposed, would you vote no? Okay. Chair notes that the matter passed unanimously. Thank you all for your time. We appreciate it, and we'll wait for the next steps. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Nooncaster is back there, I believe, and he's probably ready to come forward. So, sir, we'll recognize you under the issue of new and old business, updated Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. So, welcome.
I brought my joke book to watch, say something profound while the green bars are going across, but I don't have one right now. Much shorter presentation, I don't know.
We could suppose that's traffic moving very smoothly along the highway out there, and it's not too.
Everything's taken care of.
Yeah.
Everything's taken care of. Hey, perfect. Well, members of council, my name is Matt Nooncaster for the record, president and founding principal of City Explained Incorporated, the lead consultant hired by the town as an extension of staff to complete an update to the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. For this evening, I'm recognizing that council was, had membership on the Project Steering Committee, so I'm not going to repeat everything that we've done in terms of planning process and the like. I really wanted to focus this evening on what has changed since the public draft document was released in February. And as you embark and read the new document, I really want to highlight those areas that you should focus on that are different from the previous document. I'll do that through a slide presentation, but I'm happy to stop at any point at your discretion with questions, or if you want to wait till the end, it's, it's your show. You let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So just quickly, starting with the table of contents, the document has grown in terms of comments that were received, whether it was at the draft workshop that we had, or we had a one-month-long public comment period that came in. We got comments that way as well. And it was really to review, refine, and expand on some ideas and thoughts. So that's kind of what made the document grow. So we're now up to 257 pages. A lot of that is because we added recommendations. We even added a new theme and repackage the theme that I'll go through as we have our presentation this evening. We still have the same number of maps. Some of the infographics were updated for base population and for consistency. The site concept drawings are now complete and are included in the document. The matrices are still seven, and I'll go over what those are for. Our hand renderings and photos increased tremendously, again, to be able to support the text and some of the recommendations that we had. We wanted to have a picture with the text to make sure we had clarity. So that's really where the document grew in terms of what you're seeing this evening or what you'll be embarking on reading compared to what was released in February. So I'm just going to highlight some of the changes that were made. First, just right off the bat, the, what we called the vision statement in the previous public draft document was not consistent with your strategic plan. It was, they were words that were grabbed onto because of our planning process, but we felt, you know what, you have a vision statement already. Let's make sure we're consistent in what we're speaking and saying. So the Garner vision statement now went back to the original version from 2016 with some modifications that had occurred as part of official business. But we did keep the bottom sentence in there. And that's because we got a lot of positive respect about talking about how there should be commitments to this plan. So we did add that, that last sentence. That's from before with the public draft. We kept that part, but the first part that you see is an exact match now to the vision statement for the town of Garner. And then I'm just going to highlight through the chapters, a couple other things to really key in on as you go. The first thing is just, again, we have our map that talks about where our different planning jurisdictions are and why we're doing this plan in terms of consistency with state law, enabling zoning and the like. It was mentioned actually by comments from the Planning Commission to make sure we highlight in here that by state law, you're not required to follow your plan. But we're trying to make sure that there's a lot of enthusiasm for this and support. And going back to that vision statement that we had all the way through the document about how we're going to try, we would want to try to not stray away from this document as we go forward, but we do recommend or acknowledge the facts in terms of where a comprehensive plan and what its standing is in the state of North Carolina. And then there was also some comments that were raised about setting expectations for what government can really control in terms of growth, development, and conservation. And if you remember from previous conversations, we talked about property owners have influence different developers and what they bring to you have influence, the banking community and what they'll lend, the different demographics that are trying to live in certain places or shop in certain places, and then the government. And so we just acknowledged and wanted to highlight with a couple of small revisions to the paragraph that just makes sure everyone understands what government's role is in that process. We also had a fantastic comment. This came from the public, saying, you know, how do we know where we're going if we don't know where we've been? So we've added a new spread about the town history that we have here. And it's just really, it was a fun piece to write, frankly. I really enjoyed just doing the research and getting that on paper. Give us your reactions to that as you read the document. And then this is maybe a little more controversial, I'll say, after the Planning Commission meeting. This is, every time I come to you and stay overnight at the True Hotel, by Hilton Hotel, when the elevator doors open, this is on their wall. And I thought it was really interesting about how they communicate some of the things that are going on within the town. And so we wanted to try it out. Now, just to be very clear, all ideas we come up with aren't always good ideas. And some people acknowledge that some of these destinations are outside of Garner. And while maybe unfortunate, that's what we heard, some of the destinations are outside of Garner that people in your community really cherish. But this might be something that hits the cutting room floor based on comments we've already received from Planning Commission, but I'm interested to hear your thoughts as well. Whether we, they were talking about whether we needed to more generalize. So maybe for restaurants, it's, you know, quick bites to eat, it's a brewery, it's white tablecloth fancy, you know, and it's just kind of those kind of things, or if they're actually businesses that are named. But there was actually a lot of discussion about this spread. So I just put that out there as you're looking at it to really think about it as well. We did update some of the data that was in our plan. Nothing that changed the outcomes or the support for the recommendations that we had. But for example, we had to put clarifications in there, and it's just the little things. So when you're looking at extraterritorial jurisdiction, the state law requires you to look at the certified population. But when you look at the certified population, it tells you, don't use this number for planning purposes. So we had to explain those reasons on why the numbers are what they are, and we just provided clarity for the different data that we had based on questions that were posed. We also got a lot of accolades for having this section at the end of Chapter One about how you use this document. And so I bring it back to you to kind of review those two pages as well. There weren't a lot of changes made to it, but I'm just telling you, there was a lot of positive feedback to these two pages that talk about the fact that, don't be rigid with the document. New opportunities that come to you, evaluate them against what's in the document. Maybe they're good. Maybe it's just something we didn't anticipate at the time. Being a champion for the plan, even if you don't agree with everything in there, there's a lot in there. There might be something that you favor more than others, but holistically, is it going in the right direction? The understanding, the element of time, again, right now, the market is hot for certain types of uses and densities, but, you know, once you use land, it's really hard to reuse it again. So maybe patience is better for employment opportunities and things like that, rather than succumbing to what the hot idea is right now. And then helping make it happen, talking about, don't just rely on a small group of people to make this happen, but have widespread support for it. Again, we got great feedback that those pages were well received. When you go into Chapter Two, now, this is a longer chapter. It's more detailed, potentially more complicated, if you, if you can't take a step back and look at it. And so we tried to provide some more predictability to the chapter. One of the comments was to provide sort of a table of contents about how all this stuff kind of fits together, which is what you see in the larger text, and blues and greens. And then we break it into three main parts. So the first part we have is the framework itself. We have your guiding principles that are stated here. Now, these are not, these did not change from the public draft, but I'm bringing them back to you to remind you that if you have a rezoning or a major opportunity ahead of you, you'd be looking for consistency with these statements to see whether you would, you would support that or not from the comprehensive plan level. And then that framework section comes in with this map. This map, I've described it as kind of the backflow preventer. It's the most general, broadest way to organize the town and its planning area. And it, it puts out some, some kind of absolutes about activity centers and extraterritorial jurisdiction and all of those good things. And so when something comes in that's really contrary to this, you want to think very hard about whether you should accept that or not, because everything needs to be moving in the same direction. And this map, it's general enough, but it does keep continuity within the jurisdiction. For this map, compared to the public draft, there are some additional circles that were added for different types of activity centers. Some of them were moved slightly. And you may notice the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the hatched area, we enlarged it and moved it further south, looking at some of those large properties that could really become hot and in play as NC 540 is complete. We thought that the town should have some influence on what happens there. So we actually expanded that compared to the, the previous draft. In terms of the typology, one of the things that might be subtle that you don't notice unless you really stare at the page is this used to be called the future land use map. And you remember, our entire project is about setting character first and letting everything fall in there. So we actually rebranded this map as the character typology map. And then as part of this, we made, I think it was about somewhere plus or minus 35 different revisions or refinements to this map based on things we heard. Most notably, what happened is on April 4th, the City of Raleigh approved their southeast special area study. And so we really wanted to look at what was happening in that part of your planning area and seeing how that would work across the border with what was going on there. We also did some review and refinement of looking at the bus rapid transit coming down 401. And what Raleigh was proposing to make sure there was continuity and that we weren't leaving anything on the table is Garner in terms of heights, bulk, and density. So we looked at that as well. So just to remind ourselves, we do have different characters. So this is not a permitted use table. It's not all about use. It's about setting character. And we, we leave the breadcrumbs for how those other decisions are made, but we recognize places as special as open space, whether it's passive or active. Because of all your planning area that extends south, we do have a lot of what we call rural living, and these are areas that are on well and septic and the like, and probably would remain that way, at least for the future of this plan. We have neighborhoods that are recognized, and there are different types of neighborhoods, but this recognizes neighborhoods as a whole. We have different places to shop and dine and be entertained in our retail centers. If you, if you remember from our planning process, there's a lot more emphasis this time around on employment centers and economic development opportunities compared to your previous and current Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan that was really residential focused. So that has, has changed a little bit, and the description is there. And then there's a whole new emphasis on mixed-use centers to try to create more energy, more activity, greater productivity, whether it's from uses or tax production or those kind of things with these mixed-use centers and their character. And then, as I mentioned, my term of bread, kind of the breadcrumbs that are left, for each of those broad character types, we've already put in our plan how they connect to your zoning districts right now in your UDO. There may be some refinements and tweaks needed to the UDO with text amendments to make sure there's a one-for-one comparison or compliment here. But generally speaking, we know where we're going in terms of translating the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan to zoning. Now, the second bucket, we talked about while character, and you're looking at that map, it's sort of flat, or the, almost a romantic idea of what those places would be like for you. We also felt we had to have a development change in intensity map. So this talks about like how much coverage there is on lots, what the parking might be like, the blocks might be like, how tall things might be. And we made revisions to this map as well based on comment and feedback that we got. You'll notice up near the Gateway Station area, we did increase the intensity because we looked at, again, the City of Raleigh had up to 12 stories coming, coming up to your jurisdiction. So we wanted to complement some of that coming down the line itself. And then we softened it out as we transitioned into the existing development. And then we softened it out as we transitioned into the existing developed areas. And then if you look on NC 50, actually, as you go north of the NC 540 corridor, we recognized what was there now and wanted to have some smoother transitions in that area as well. So we really looked at this map in terms of what was going on, in terms of what's here and what your opportunities are. And then I mentioned again, really with the Southeast Special Study that was approved by the City of Raleigh, we really looked at that area again, around Rock Quarry Road and the interchange on 540. Again, none of this changed, but just to make sure, I reference it, that, you know, for those colors, we are looking at kind of what type of development is occurring in those areas? Are the uses separated but close, or are they actually mixed? How tall the buildings are? How long the blocks might be? How people would use transportation in those areas? How that, how you do parking? Whether you're separating things with a setback, or you're bringing them together with a build-to requirement? And then when you're building your streets, what type of section are you looking at? Do you want to have mandatory sidewalks on both sides? Or is it more rural and you have more of a swale drainage, that kind of thing, to make sure the street matches the land use on either side and its character? And then the third bucket that we have here, again, is a lot of matrices that were created. These were still in the public draft, but we've added the quote because people want to know what these were really used for. And so they're, they're simple, on purpose, and they're meant to just provide connections. But we are going to rely on the UDO and other plans and studies to implement some of these things and put the meat on the bones for it. But this tells with clear intent sort of what the intended outcome is. So we have here for what types of residential buildings would go in different character areas, what type of non-residential buildings would go in character areas, the size and shape of blocks and how connected streets are by character area, and then what type of open space features should be prevalent in a different character area. So we move into Chapter Three, and this was probably, probably had the most change, was in Chapter Three. If you're reviewing the document, you only have time to review one chapter, this would be the one to really look at. And again, we got a lot of comments about expanding some things. We got some ideas, especially about homes and neighborhoods that you see here in the middle. We've actually kind of rebranded and repackaged that theme, so there was a lot of talk about existing and new homes and neighborhoods in Garner, and we should take a stance on some of those things, so we did. And then we have the other four elements that were in the previous document. So now we have five elements total. And what we ended up doing for each of them was we sort of repackage and restated them based on some of the comments we got. So for each theme, this is just one of the, of the five that are shown, we actually have an introduction now to each of those. So like, what is the theme about? How does it apply? Where does it apply? What are we really trying to achieve with it? Is all kind of an introduction now to each of the theme categories. And then we go back to our original format, where we have in green text, all the different recommendations that go under that theme. And then we thought that the recommendation itself might not be specific enough, so we have the paragraphs underneath it that provide the detail and the meaning to get the predictability right. And then the other thing that we did was we added some ideas to each of the themes that really aren't recommendations, but they're just intended goals of what you want to try to do with certain choices that you have for the theme. So we actually added a spread on bridges. We think that that's one of the ways to kind of address the US 70 corridor. We have here, you see, on missing middle housing. So what is it and what are we trying to achieve with it? We have another one on retrofitting big box sites, kind of like your Kmart site that is being reinvested in right now. We have one on complete streets, and I'm trying to think the other one that we have right now. But there are these different spotlights that are in the, in the themes, and so they're included as well. And then the focus area studies are now complete. These boundaries and locations have kind of evolved over time as we've gone through the process, but we have our six now. I'm just going to show you Area One as an example, and the rest of them are in the document. But for each one now, it has a site plan, a concept site plan, that it has keyed recommendations that you see with the black numbers on the right-hand side of this page spread. And those are recommendations that would be implemented. They are just good best management design practices that you might follow when these types of developments come in. And then you have the, the purple letters that correspond to different drawings that we have. One of the other things that we added was an actual definition. So like, why is this drawing in the document? So that when you look at it, you know what it's trying to portray and achieve. So we've added those sentences into the different drawings. Again, here, because we're looking at building heights and Bus Rapid Transit, we talked about lower profile buildings, but also some higher buildings now because we changed the development change in intensity map as we looked at what was going on further north on the line. As you get into Chapter Four, not real drastic change in these chapters, but we did review with the county attorney, the language here, because we wanted to make sure that these other documents that we're referencing by text have equal weight as if they were under the Chapter 160D umbrella, so that you can use them to make conditions or findings of facts and approval decisions that you have. And so we feel strong that this is adequate in terms of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, tying it into the Garner Forward Plan, as well as the four transportation documents that drive a lot of your decision-making processes. In Chapter Six, Supporting Infrastructure, I just remind you that we did do a likely impact analysis, so we did try to enumerate the, how much demand is coming, so that you can work with your different service providers to try to ensure capacity is available. We have our Priority Investment Areas map, understanding that we can only stretch a dollar so far, only have so many dollars in our pocket. Where are the areas that we might want to try to invest in first, or coordinate with people to invest in? And a lot of these areas are the employment sites and catalyst sites you have, as well as some of the mixed-use centers that are there. As you go through these definitions, it kind of has a spectrum of things that the town might want to take the lead on, whether it's coordination or dollars, all the way down then to whether or not you would support a developer who would make that investment, down to where you may just not support that extension at all because it doesn't support a principle in your plan. We also did break them out between residential and non-residential, because you might prefer something non-residential because of its economic development. Or remember, we had the goal of trying to have a balanced tax base and those kind of things as well. So we did make the distinction between residential and non-residential. And then concluding in Chapter Seven, we have a Plan Implementation Matrix. Just in full disclosure, so you kind of know how the sausage gets made, we keep this in Microsoft Excel all the way up until we come to you for the adoption process. It's because these things change and are so fluid, we don't want to end up making a change in Chapter Two and find out we didn't fix it in Chapter, in the implementation matrix. So the implementation matrix is available and it's complete, but it's still in Microsoft Excel up until the point that we come to you for adoption. So just so you're aware of that. It actually helps you do word finds and searches and the like as well. Ultimately, it'll look something more like you see here on the slides where they will be formatted, it will be included in the document. So when you adopt the document, it will have the same weight because it's included in there. The other thing I'll mention for you or folks who might be watching this evening is we have, we have set up a Plan Adoption tab on our project website, garnerforward.com. And so you'll see in there that we have the draft plan, that's the public hearing version, that is now online. The full matrix is also online, so you can look at that as well. Obviously be distributed to you, but if other people want to look at it, it's there. And I'll also be uploading the presentations that we give at any of the meetings between now and the adoption of the document. So with that, I'll just see if there are any comments or questions. Otherwise, I wish you good luck in the adoption process, right?
Yeah, I'm going to turn to Council, but my mind is fresh on the last page you had there. Will the final version be slightly larger print?
Yeah, so.
Okay, I was, I was sort of teasing on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's fine. Okay, a lot, a lot of information, I think a lot of exciting thoughts and ideas, and a good, a good direction finder for our planning, both now and in the future, seems like. So Council, what questions do you have for Matt? Start with you, Ms. Behringer, if you want to.
I don't have questions at this point. I think it's a really good document, really well done, and captured what we talked about in the committees, and even the word choices were just really appropriate to our town and our goals, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Singleton.
Good work, appreciate your work, Matt. I don't agree with some of the things in there. I'm not a missing middle person at all. That is the biggest scam and misleading planning tool. Me and Mr. Dillinger have had this conversation more than once, and texted back and forth about it more than once, numerous times. It's a planning tool. It's not an affordable housing tool, when it's been made to sound like that, when in fact, in this area in particular, growing areas like the Triangle, it will do nothing but drive prices up. You can't go, and most of them, you can't go in a newer subdivision because they've got HOA, so you have to go to the older subdivision. So you can put four townhouses in, in Tiffany Woods where you used to live, or Heather Hills or Edsberg where my parents lived, you can put four townhomes on one lot, charge $1,250 a month for rent, that's $5,000 that generates. You can't rent the house next door for $5,000, so all you're doing is driving property values up again. It's like, this doesn't work, it's like the case in Raleigh where they can take the one house worth $700,000 or whatever, and they want to put $1.8 million townhomes on there, 14 of them. The missing middle, how's that missing? It's missing for certain folks, it does not solve the housing affordability process. It's a planning tool, which I understand to add, to make it more dense in certain areas. My issue is that you're going into older neighborhoods, that people bought a house there specifically for the fact that you've got a R-12, or R-15, or R-20 lot, and that you like it there, and you bought it because there's a single house next door to you and a single house beside you. So I'll stop, because I could stay here all night rambling about middle missing. I have done a lot of reading on it. It's a planning tool, I understand that, but it's misleading the public, because they think, oh my God, we'll be at a house there, we can't afford it. No, a lot's going to have the exact opposite impact in an area like the Triangle, now in some smaller towns, it may be very well, because the population is not increasing like they are here. I'll stop, Mr. Darren Dillinger can be glad to pick up on that, and he ramble on it too.
Well, we don't want too much rambling, but anyway.
Thank you for your work.
Phil?
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
Great presentation, by the way. It's, I know there's a lot of detail into it, and it's just, just, I'm really enjoying the, especially all the, where you're running the numbers, comparisons where it used to be, where we're at now, percentages and what have you. That's quite, it's an eye-opening experience to read some of that stuff, so, but great presentation overall, this, this is good.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
Yes, Mr. Nuncaster, we have briefly discussed the tight timeline that you're on to pull all this information together. And I know that it may be hard for some folks to comprehend how tight of a schedule you are on to pull together such a document and to capture, to review, collect, and analyze, and bring forward what you have. That was a, a huge feat to accomplish thus far, and with the quality that you provided and what you have done, will you please everybody? No, it's not going to happen. But, but the effort that was put in there, I will say is commendable, and appreciate everything that you've done thus far in providing a document that could be extremely technical, but yet still is very easy in my mind for anyone to pick up and get an idea of the direction that the town is, the vision the town is trying to put forth relative to, to the, to the overall development of the town. So with that being said, I would say, good job thus far, and we will see if it gets adopted.
I appreciate it. I'll, just in quick response, I'll tell you, because I've been writing these for many decades now, and somebody recently told me in a community I'm working in that the best plans that you write are the ones where everybody hates you, because it means you found the middle road and the consensus. That if, if people come in saying they love it, it's probably because you leaned too far into that group only and didn't balance, so it is interesting.
That sounds like a comment I heard years ago when I used to officiate game soccer, sort of the same thing, everybody hates you.
You did a well.
Okay, let's see, Mr. Dill.
It's fun to see it all in one place, finally. Just to carry over just briefly with what Mr. Singleton said, I think he's, he's right that that concept is sort of a marketing tool developers want to use to pack in more density that might not be what is in the best interest of what you're trying to accomplish. It doesn't solve the housing affordability issues, it's sort of couched as doing that. I'll go out of order, but kind of to that point, when I was looking at the matrix, it seems like the mixed-use character areas are a little, like, too inclusive of some of the building typologies, like where they're not dense enough, where there's sort of single family that are small and some others. So I think there's some tightening up to say, I think one of the things, I haven't read all of this yet.
Understood.
Is our definition of mixed use, what is the threshold that we want to use? And I think it, it kind of can run the gambit between 1,000 residential units, and I've got a couple of commercial buildings on the road front edge, and I don't think, I don't think that's kind of what we mean when we're talking mixed use. There's less of that in here, it's actually more inclusive than that. So I'll send my comments separately when I go through, I'll have a long list. Another actual question I had was, are there any, like, semi-urgent UDO changes that have risen to the top in the conversations? And as we get closer to adoption, are we preparing to include them along, in parallel with the adoption of this, or are they going to be on their own timeline?
Yeah, so it's, it's a good question. I want to go back to my notes to give you specific examples, rather than potentially misquote for today's meeting, but we could, you know, as we go through the process, we can talk about that. At least at this point, there is nothing on the consultant's plate to suggest UDO amendments, but your staff is very capable, and so we can be having those conversations as we go through this process. But at this point in time, I think the assumption, at least for me, would be that staff would be making those UDO amendments at the time appropriate.
Another question, real quick, and I'll ask you, dude, off the top of your head, so apologize. On the implementation section, there's a lot in the previous version of the plan of like action items and kind of, was there a lot of carryover from that? Or was that sort of taken fresh from these conversations, or is it a mix of?
No, that's a good question. So I'm going to go back to what I said earlier about how I've been doing this for a long time. I'm proud enough to not just ignore the previous plan. You know, a lot of times a consultant comes in and says, well, I didn't write that plan, so I'm going to ignore it. We read the current plan and pulled out all the recommendations we felt were still pertinent and played well with the character theme that we were going. And so there are actually recommendations in word for word from the previous plan. We did not ignore it, we built upon it.
Okay, well, by my position, I don't get to vote on it, but I will make a couple of comments, Jeff. I appreciate the work and the time you put into this and the various workshops. I think you, you and your company made a valiant effort to incorporate the ideas and thoughts of our citizens, and you did that in a variety of ways. When I moved here 35 years ago, Garner was, was quite a different town. I think it's made a lot of changes that are very positive, and we're probably at the, at the point where we're, we're challenged by our growth, which is a good thing, and challenged by the thing that growth brings. That's sort of a throwaway comment, I suppose you can say that about most any town in Wake County right now. I was in a meeting last night with other mayors, and we threw out all kinds of figures about the growth and how it continues to go. But I certainly view this as a, as a very valid document. I hope this council will accept it and prove it. I think it's, it's flexible enough that it's what I call a working document, so it's something that I think we can use hopefully for some time to come. I know these things need to be updated from time to time, but overall, a lot, a lot of good thoughts and ideas in it. I'm sure it'll get tweaked and jerked around and so forth, but hey, that's what the plans are for. So again, thanks, thanks for your efforts, and we're not finished yet, but those are my comments, anyway. Anybody else? Staff, Mr. Manager, you have anything you want to add?
I mean, I think it's a little different from the previous plan. I like, a lot of things I like about it are the, the areas, the concentration, concentrated areas that show redevelopment, and I guess kind of imagine what some of the corridors could be coming up pretty soon as the Town of Garner grows outward, so. And a really good public, public input process. I enjoyed going to some of the open workshops, and it looks like there was a lot of engagement and a lot of folks writing things on the wall and stickers and things like that, and a lot of different activities, variety of activities at the charrettes. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Assistant Managers, Jody, John?
Just a reminder that the current schedule we have now is to bring this to a public hearing in May, Planning Commission in June, with planned adoption in July, if all those things stay on schedule. And a big thanks to Matt for keeping the project moving forward this whole time.
Okay, Ms. Miller? Ms. Miller?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that is the next step, I guess, is to...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I see Mr. Trezenberg.
Oh, excuse me, yeah. Thank you, thank you, yeah. Mr. Trezenberg, yeah, I saw you appear on the screen. Comments, observations from you, sir?
Nothing really beyond what's been said already. We've really, staff has enjoyed working with Matt's team. We're really optimistic and looking forward to hopefully getting this plan adopted. I think it will, in some respects, help disencumber us from, you know, some things that have been, been kind of long-standing ways of doing certain things, that now, you know, we've got some clear direction of how to hopefully bring about some of those changes, so very excited about that. In terms of, I did want to mention, in terms of UDO amendments, staff is, has a tracking sheet that we're working on to keep note of some of the bigger issues that we see, and if not proceeding simultaneously, to at least have those bigger items tracking along right after. But we're going to try and see if we can get them simultaneously, but things are still popping up right now, just, you know, due to the review of the document, but that is our hope and intent.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Anybody have a quick question for Jeff?
I'll give him the award for the word of the night, disencumber. They're disencumbering you too much. Look up the definition, it says that you're relieving yourself from an encumberment, so thumbs up for the word of the night. I want to say also to Matt, when you read this, the way you put it together, it's not, I'm saying it's an easy read, I don't mean that, but it's not so technical that you can read it and lose interest or fall asleep. It's at least, it's a little smoother, a little easier to read than some of the documents that we've had, some, you know, some of the technical documents have to have that information in there. That's just the way it is, as you know, but from a planning standpoint, and maybe from citizens, it's a read that's a little easier to kind of follow. It's not as, it's just not, it flows pretty well, the flow of what you did works well.
Well, thank you. We work really hard on that, so I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Okay, so I believe the recommendation that's coming to council as a result of this presentation discussion tonight is to go ahead and authorize or set a time for a public hearing, and the date I see here is May 16. Mr. Manager, is that still, as far as you know, the recommendation from staff?
Yes.
Okay. What say you, council? That seems the next logical step in the process, schedule the public hearing. Does that date seem like a good time?
Almost.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Singleton and Ms. Dillinger, for the motion in the second, so unless there's any other comments need to be made before the vote. Okay, if you favor the motion then to bring this back for approval or consideration on May the 16th, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, no. Okay, so it's so ordered, and that's what we will plan to do. And again, thank you so much. I guess you'll be back then.
As I was going to say, I'll see you soon. See you soon. Thank you all.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. We need a break.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have the item that we pulled off of the consent agenda to come back to, so I'm going to suggest that we take at least a 10-minute, maybe 15-minute break, and come back and attend to that item and any other unfinished business we may have. So with that, I will declare a 15-minute recess, so go refresh yourselves and be ready for the last item.
Okay, counsel, I'm going to gal us back into session. Thank you for coming back timely from our recess. For the members of the public out there, we are now taking up an item that was not originally printed as part of the regular agenda, but in fact was an item on the consent agenda. And Mr. Dellinger requested that it be removed from the consent agenda and be considered on our regular agenda in open session. And so the item is under the heading of meeting rules and procedures, and it's a revision to the town code of ordinances regarding meetings and the governor town council rules of procedures, put together primarily by our attorney. And it's something that's probably long overdue. We haven't made substantive revisions for some time. So at this point in time, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Dellinger for his statements and observations regarding his desire to have other discussion on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At some conversations with Attorney Jones last week, and not in enough time for enough conversation to be had amongst all of council, I don't have them in front of me, but I think Attorney Jones can bring them up. There are only three. One is related to the public hearings, and that, I'll paraphrase while she's bringing them up, and that all public hearings would appear on a consent agenda for council, but would it give us the discretion to assign certain public hearing types at the discretion to the town manager? That's the yellow change there. The other is on appointments, and really the change is to keep it the way we have it now. In reading the draft, it's so out of sync with how we currently do it, that I'm not sure how it would handle, we would be able to handle it in an open session with casting votes and ballots. And we're getting kind of close on time this year with regards to our interviews and placing folks, that I thought, and then I asked Mr. Vance, that it'd be better to keep the process as it is for now, just given the process. So nominations from council would be sort of be to ask them apply for the position and go through our interview process. The last one was a very minor word change on the decorum, to change the word criticize to impugn. I think criticize is sort of, can be 75% taken negatively, but also there's a 20-some percent that isn't necessarily negative. But I think impugn better captures the spirit of what was intended. But those were the recommendate, I don't know what you call them, recommendations or feedback that I had to Ms. Jones last week.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest maybe we take them up one at a time. I believe we identified three.
Yes, sir.
Altogether, and some of you may have, I don't know if you, I'm sure you had access to email that Mr. Dellinger sent around. So let's take, let's take the first item there, which has to do, I believe, with public hearings. And so I'm gonna, I'm going to basically have council members respond however they want to, but as mayor, I'm going to take the privilege of just saying that I think as we consider, you know, how we're going to change or in any way alter the process, we certainly, number one, need to be concerned with the staffing folks who pull the information together for our public hearings. And I think we also need to be sensitive to the fact that whatever we do, in my view, should not in any way cause any significant delays in the process. I think the system we have for moving items through and to, onto our agendas and dealing with them is very important. And so we need to be cautious about making changes that in some way might slow down the process by any substantial amount. That's just a general observation. So with that, I will just kind of open up the discussion for either questions you have for Mr. Dellinger or comments you'd like to make in regards to this. I guess the last thing I would say is that ideally tonight, at the conclusion of the discussion, we could come to an agreement that you like the version as is, you want to make some changes to it, but ideally, we could, we could reach an agreement to have this as our next version. So who wants to go first? Phil, I'll pick on you, if you have any observations.
Were we talking about calling public hearings, since it's highlighted, is that what we're talking about here?
Well, the first item is Rule 36, which deals with public hearings. And of course, you saw the information that our attorney shared with us. And then, maybe we should clarify, Mr. Dellinger, the highlighted segment is, or is that the portion you're stating should be done?
That was my feedback.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, feedback, excuse me. Okay. So does that help some, Phil?
So the, for the attorney, so all public hearings shall be called by council. Is that what's been recommended? Is it make sure I'm understanding what we did here? The highlighted portion here?
The highlighted portion would be what Councilman Dellinger's suggesting, and I think he suggested it at the previous work session, that council have a role in the calling of public hearings. As you may recall, under state law, annexations, there has to be first a calling of the public hearing, and before you can have the public hearing. And I believe part of that reason is that you're dealing with people who are not your residents, so the state legislature thought, you know, an additional process was necessary. You have required public hearings for things like rezoning, special use permits, the budget, and certain other actions that you take. But for instance, there are some ordinances and approvals of contracts. There's some other things that you can take action on without having a public hearing.
So I guess my question is on Rule 36, public hearing, both in black as well as highlighted in yellow. Is this what you have presented, or is it highlighted in yellow? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
The highlighted in yellow is different than what I had proposed.
Okay.
Than what's in your agenda packet.
Okay.
If you want to refer to, of course, I've got a paper copy, but if you wanted to refer to what the original language is, you could go to page 24, which introduces Rule 36 for public hearings. And there you will see what our attorney had presented for consideration. And the highlighted is the information that Councilmember Dellinger has shared. And while, I mean, I'll come back to you, Phil, if we need to, while you're considering or looking, if anybody else wants to jump in at this point with any observations.
Is this more suited for a work session than what we're doing here tonight? I'm just asking.
Well, that, you know, that thought crossed my mind, but I, it's, I guess, the council's purview, if you want to do that. I had thought perhaps we might be able to get through this without, I don't know if you're referring to the length of time we may need to.
Yes, sir.
To discuss it.
Because we could do this different, because like what it is in the yellow, if we could have this, if we could see the entire thing, I guess, maybe that's just me, I'm sorry.
So this was the original proposed that's in your packet. And you see in that A, it's only that council can hold public hearings.
Right.
There is that reference to holding public hearings required by law. The additional language is highlighted in yellow, which would be that like annexations, it would come, every public hearing would come to you for approval on the consent agenda. And these are your rules. You certainly have the authority to adopt this, but there are some concerns with adding another layer of an approval process into it. And my only concern is if you do adopt this, we may need to delay the effective date, so we make sure that, that things that are already on the schedule, so to speak, that we can work that into the process correctly, and make, make applicants aware that there's another, there would be another step.
I guess my question is, to present a change here, I'd like to, before we could talk about, well, I want to make this change for this reason here, because if we make this change, this will make this run smoother, or this will do this, or this will do that. And I'm just, I'm really not prepared to deal with this right now.
Okay, well, yeah, yeah.
I could address his question.
Okay, we'll do that. And then, yeah, I was going to go to each council member.
The impetus for it is to avoid situations where there are public hearings called and council is not aware that the public hearing has been called. There are certain processes in the UDO where it's, public hearing can be set, and we are not made aware of it. We had this incident occur last November. Mr. Lee got up, and there was a special use permit hearing that was set the night before, was sent out the night before we did the rezoning. And I don't think any of us were aware that that had occurred. And if, my position is that since we are the ones that have to engage with the public, that we should be in the loop with regards to notice of those public hearings. And we, the way it's worded, it could be delegated in a different way if we so chose at a later time. But that's the impetus, is that we are always aware of public hearings before they get scheduled.
And I'm going to make the observation that I think, you know, that was certainly an exception. It's certainly my view that the council gets proper notice on public hearings before they come to this body for deliberation and so forth. But having said that, I want to recognize other council members for, I guess, both, two things as far as I'm concerned. Feel free to comment on Rule 36, that's before us now, you could comment on others, and/or whether or not you have any views about if you think this discussion might go on such that you'd want to move it over to the work session that's coming up. So Ms. Barringer, I'll recognize you, and then recognize some others.
Okay, well, just two thoughts. One, it seems like the addition complicates the process. And for that reason, I would like to have it moved to the work session so that we can discuss it more, because I'm confused about why we need it.
Okay. Mr. Singleton, any comments you care to make, sir?
Well, as I told Mr. Dellinger, we talked about this before this meeting. If we want to find out when public hearings are scheduled, I had no trouble with that. I mean, they got to schedule a public hearing, the staff has to contact Ms. Gibson to let her know she can advertise it. Just copy us on the email. So all I need, I mean, that's, to me, that would be reasonable. If the planning department, if Mr. Trezenberg or someone in planning is, you know, we've got three public hearings, and we want to schedule for these dates, copy us on it. We know it's coming, and Ms. Gibson can just confirm that these dates are set. Because we know they come and go. People call and council, or it has to be delayed, or one gets added on, maybe not for a CUP rezoning, because that has so many days. But as long as we're tagged on it, or we can see what's coming, because some of that is already done in the previous agenda information you give us. But I know those changes, by the time you show it to us, what may come as a public hearing in a month, may change. So, you know, if we want to be aware of when the public hearings are being scheduled, then I have no trouble with that. Just let us know, just say, copy it, copy the council on the email. And that way, you know, it's been presented to the clerk's office to schedule it, and when it's done, because she's, I mean, we get the notice about it, we put them on email, we get the notice and everything. But if we want to know we're a step before that process, just tag us on the email.
And I'm going to recognize her in just a minute, but let me hear from Mr. Vance.
I am thinking, I hear the clarity in which Councilman Singleton is speaking, and also hear the reason and concern of my other council members for just further analysis of what has been provided, for just for further review, for clarity and understanding. And I am leaning now towards moving this to the work session for, allow us to, including myself, to get more deeper understanding as to what is being asked, so we can be clear on, on, on what is being recommended. That way, I believe, we'll be able to make a better, more informed decision. That's what I would like to recommend.
I've heard at least two, maybe three, suggest that it deserves more discussion that fit better in our work session. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm not trying to put Ms. Gibson on the spot, but she works outside my door, and I bother her more than I should. But anyway, it seems to me that, you know, after we finish a meeting, pretty soon thereafter, I start seeing some emails that, based on notice requirements and otherwise, that she sends out indicating that there's going to be this public hearing on this date, usually for the next meeting. Am I correct on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not really sure what you're referring to.
If I may, I think, yes, emails are generated when the notices are posted on the website.
Yes.
So that's probably what you're seeing.
That's it, yeah.
The majority of what you see is the planning department putting them on.
Right.
For instance, when there was the development agreement required a public hearing, I had that post, you know, I had that posted. There's, you know, a few things that have to be done in the newspaper, and either through the planning department, or whichever department generates it. So it may be different, not just the planning department that may be doing it, but yes, whenever it's posted on the website, which is the majority of where we post public hearing notices, because we have authority under state law to do that, that generates an email, not only to council and employees, but also to anyone who signed up to receive notice. And then there's also the mailing for rezonings and special use permits that go out to the properties in the area. Both of those will happen between 10 and 25 days before the hearing, because that's required under state law. They might, the mailing and the posting might not always happen exactly on the same day, but my understanding in talking to Jeff Trezenberg and the planning department is that unfortunate issue that happened last year would not happen again. They will put a safeguard in that the notice would not go out. And on the pending agenda, you will sometimes see where it says, you know, assuming planning commission, you know, recommends, this would be the tentative hearing date. Obviously, if planning commission does not make a recommendation, and they continue it, you know, it gets pushed out further.
Okay. So from my vantage point, you know, we can certainly carry on the further discussion if you want to, but I want to go ahead and resolve the issue of whether or not council would rather move this over to the, to the work session as a discussion item, and bring it back at that time for further debate discussion, assuming that it may take longer than maybe people are prepared to deal with tonight, or they want a little more time to look at it. So.
So move, move to the work session.
All right.
Okay.
All right. My motion is before you to move this discussion to the work session to take up the same item.
You second it?
Is that right?
Okay.
All right, I'm going to call a question then. So if you favor.
Question.
I have a question.
Okay.
So do we want to go over the other ones, and maybe approve those, withdraw that one, and then just that we've moved forward with our new rules, and then bring it back as an individual one? That way, we have less to talk about. I mean, I can do whichever, I'm up for whichever, but I'd like to get through as many as we can, and then.
Well, since we only dealt with the first one, I was making the interpretation that since we hadn't gotten to the others, that the preference would be to move the whole issue of that particular item to the work session.
Yeah, I would agree.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
The whole thing, yeah.
It's Tuesday, next Tuesday night.
I meant to ask the town manager, as we take this vote, you know better than I at this time what's on the work session. Is that a reasonable time in terms of what other issues we're going to take up that night, as far as you're concerned?
Yeah, I think there's capacity to add that.
Yeah.
We had a couple of things that came up that we probably won't be ready for, so I think there will be capacity to talk about this instead.
So I'll turn to Mr. Singleton. Ms. Singleton, you made the motion, but was it your intent to go ahead and deal with all the items and not try to deal with some of them here tonight, and move the entire conversation about this particular issue to the work session?
Fine, to the work session. I just thought we, you know, the last was just one word. Impugn was going to replace disencumber as the word of the night, so we'll talk about that. I think that's an easy, an easy change, if that's the word we want to use.
Well, I'm also willing to remove the change, so we can just move on.
Which one?
It's not worth that much conversation. I'm willing, it was, it was feedback. If y'all don't like it, I can, we can, you can just say, no, you don't want it, and we can move on.
Which one? All of them?
The one, we just, the public hearing.
Okay. Well, again, I think everybody wants to talk about it, maybe, and I'd say the work session will cover it, because I think the changes that you have suggested, the voting procedure, are trying to remain with what we currently do on nominations for people to fill boards, and not.
There's actually, yes, no change to what.
What we're currently doing.
It's in the existing.
Yeah, yes. And, but if everybody wants to talk about it one time, I sign, because that's, to me, looks like it's pretty cut and dry, because you're basically continuing to do what's, what's been done. But we can talk about the work session. Once you give us the first, and the other two shouldn't take long.
I mean, I'll recuse the first and the third, and we can just be done.
I was talking about impugn, that's fine. I understand why criticize, again, another word.
If we've got a full work session, I don't, if we've got a full work session, I don't know that we need to put another item onto it. It wasn't my intention to logjam the procedure, so if I'm.
Well, I'm thinking, based on what Mr. Dickerson said, that, you know, it could be worked into that. But if I'm hearing the conversation correctly, if we move it to that, then perhaps it will not take very long after all.
Because we have this, which will be in that agenda package, where we don't have it here. That, having this there.
There you go.
Will help. Will help, because you see what's worked through, so that's fine.
Okay. So there's a motion before us then to, to move this to, and I believe we have a second, right? So let's see what the council wants to do. If you favor the motion to move this to the work session, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Is there's opposition? No. All right, so ordered, so we will, we will do that. You wanna take it up first, well, we will sign for you, wanna take it up first thing, or whatever. According to Mr. Dillinger, it won't take too long. So, thank you very much. That handles the other, the only other item that we had on the agenda, so we now go to council reports, I believe. So I'll start...
Committee reports?
Committee, committee reports.
Committee, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. They both start with a C, but at any rate, that's okay, committee reports. And you have one?
Do not have one tonight, sir.
Okay. Any, any other committee reports that may have met? One, that's okay. All right, then I was about to skip the town manager, I guess, I don't wanna do that. Mr. Manager, you ready for a report?
We have quarterly financial report. It's behind the Talk of the Town, so David Beck, Finance Director, is here if you have any questions about that. Basically, we're about 75% into the budget year, and talks about the collection rate and those type of things, so any questions, anything you want him to talk about in particular?
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Beck is here. Appreciate the information, for sure.
Sales tax data in there, still trending pretty good, not, not as well as it had been, down a little bit year over year, but still, still good. All right?
Okay.
And Ms. Miller will talk about the Talk of the Town.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We just have a short report for April, but we've got some really important updates to share with council. First, the demolition at 4506 Jones Sausage Road has been completed, so if you've been by that, that property, you'll see the demolition started earlier in the month, all that's remaining is the building padding, and it's been seeded over. My understanding from our inspections director is that all the permits have been completed, and the closeout has happened, so we're excited to report to the council that that work has been completed. Also, the Jackie John's Senior Community Park repairs, that work has started by our contractor, and so their estimating is about four to five weeks to complete the repairs. Good news is that is the contractor has acquired most of the materials needed for the repairs, so that the next four or five weeks will really be focused on the activity of completing the repairs, and we're excited about that, especially as the nice weather is upon us. If you look at the second page, we have our Garner monthly analytics from the Garner Info app, and so for the last 30 days, we've had 21 total requests, and the type of those requests is on the left-hand side of the document. Of the requests we've had over the last 30 days, 100% has either been completed or in progress, so we're excited to report that to the council. And of the requests that has, that have come in, 67% are being responded to by either the Public Works Department or the Police Department. So that is the April report, and happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Just sort of curiosity question for me, I guess anyone of you could answer it. I'm supposing that the, the annual special pickup that the, the town does went well, and that's concluded now, am I right on that? It's...
That's correct.
Yes, that was completed, and we can get some data for, to share with the council as well, just on how much was collected and those kind of things.
I certainly didn't hear any complaints from anybody, and I saw a lot of stuff sitting out in different neighborhoods, so I think our citizens certainly try to take advantage of that, and it usually works pretty well, so. Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the manager's report? Anybody have?
And I'll just run through some events that we have coming up.
Okay, please, yeah.
The downtown night markets will get underway starting Thursday coming up, in a few, couple of days or so, and they'll run from 5:00 to 9:00 along Main Street and the Rec Center. Also have the Garner Relay for Life Saturday, April 29th, at Lake Benson Park, and there'll be a Survivor reception starting at noon, and the opening ceremony's at 1:00, and a luminary ceremony at 8:00. A longstanding event in Garner that's usually well-attended. And then the Neuse River Big Band returns to the G-PAC on Saturday, April 29th, at 7:30.
And can I just add selfishly, I guess, if you like big band music at all, I think these, this band does a pretty good job of playing some of the, the old big band music. I enjoy it. Okay?
Ms. Miller wanted to...
Yes, I just wanted to share some additional good news with the council. The manager, myself, and our Parks Rec and Cultural Resources Director attended the County Commissioners Meeting yesterday, where they approved our $2 million request for a grant for Jürgen Park Phase 1. So we're very excited to not only receive that grant, but to use it towards the project and leverage some of the bond dollars. Also, very proud to, to share with you that we were the highest-scoring project of all the submissions. So when you see the Parks and Rec team, please tell them congratulations, a lot of hard work went into the grant application, and we've got even more hard work ahead of us as we continue to design and eventually construct Jürgen Park.
That is great news, and not to steal any thunder there, but yeah, I had a chance to see and speak to the commissioner who represents the area here, and to, to thank him for his work on that, and all the commissioners for, for making that happen. It's, was a real, it's a great thing for our, for our town, so. Okay?
Also, did we wanna mention, we also have earmark pending, that's being passed up for consideration by Congressman Nickel. That might, that takes a while to run through the, the course of their process, but we're just happy that we were one of the 15 projects that he chose to send forward, so.
And that's specifically for the Meadow Brook Dam Restoration Project, so we just learned today that we were chosen, one out of 15, to be submitted to the next step in the process.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Attorney?
Just briefly, along the lines of the Jones Sausage Road demolition, once we have all the final costs on that, I will be bringing to you a resolution so that we can place a lien on the property to recover those costs of the demolition. And I've worked out with Wake County that hopefully they're gonna go ahead and foreclose on the taxes and collect that lien. That was in conjunction with, we cleaned up some of the nuisance trash issues for them as part of the demolition, so they don't, do not normally collect these types of abatement liens for the municipalities, but in this case, that they have indicated that they're willing to go forward with that.
Very good.
Ask a question, that off ramp off of 40 onto Jones Sausage Road, is that going to be widened, or what's gonna happen with that in conjunction with the improvements on the bridge?
I understand it's gonna become a two-lane, or be widened in some way, is that still the plan? I know they changed some of the plans on the bridge and the ramp.
I need to look at the plans, Ms. Behringer, to give you the exact layout of that, but it will change with the development of that bridge as, as a new format for the bridge.
There's quite a bit of trash that still gets left out there, and trucks, park, big trucks park out there from time to time as well, so just wondering how that might change and look better.
Well, it'll take some time.
Yeah.
Okay.
The trash can start now.
They, yeah, they've picked some up in the past, where we've talked to them about it, so, yeah, we'll continue to...
There today, and it was pretty, pretty big pieces of trash today.
We'll report that to DOT.
Okay. Okay, council reports, I'm gonna start with Mr. Dillinger tonight.
Yeah, there are pothole, potholes and shoulder deterioration on 70 and mechanical, so if you're on mechanical, turning right south onto 70, this is huge chunks have fallen off, and it's, so if we get DOT to look at that, it's, somebody could lose a tire trying to make that right-hand turn.
Big trucks turn, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, and it's, it's dangerous. The other is just a comment, the Neuse River Big Band approached the Optimist Club, they needed a regular rehearsal space, and so the club has offered up rehearsal space for them. They were, are happy to call Garner home, I guess they wanna become our, our town band, but we were happy to do that, and they do put on a good show, so very excited that they're making Garner home.
Yeah, just quickly, has your place been used some also for the town players?
I think so.
I thought I'd heard somebody say they may have...
It may have.
Had a chance to do a few rehearsals for their program over there.
They may, I'm not in charge of the rentals.
Oh, okay, all right.
We offer their churches and Girl Scouts and all kinds of stuff that use the space, but, anyway, just that Neuse River...
Nice, yeah.
... connection, exciting.
Mr. Vance?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, have we heard back from the railroad yet about the graffiti on the utility box?
Refer to the assistant managers, because I have not, and I don't...
The last time I checked with Mr. Jones, he had not heard back from the rep at Norfolk Southern.
I think they would wanna improve their reputation right now. Okay. And next question, the segment of St. Mary's Street that runs from West Garner Road over to Main Street crosses the railroad track, it's in, it's in bad shape, and is, is that town's responsibility to maintain that, or is it the...
The roadway adjacent to the railroad?
I'm talking about the segment of St. Mary's Street that goes from Garner Road over the railroad track to Main Street.
That would be a town...
That's a town road, but it's, the closer you get to the railroad track, the railroad handles that, but yeah, but the rest of it's town street, yes.
Can we have somebody take a look at it and see what might be done as far as repairing it, so the edges of the pavement are extremely uneven, and there's some really places that look gouged out. I just think it, you know, hasn't been maintained very well over the years. And that's all.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Items one is last meeting, Ms. Warren, made the presentation, budget items, and there was an item in regards to funding for Jones Sausage Road, and it's up to $20 million, and there was something talked about rejuvenation of, of roads and streets, about $2 million that was suggested to go toward that road. When we go into the budget session, are we gonna talk more about that?
We can. What I, I think what she was referring to is we had come to you pretty recently asking to approve $2 million for a couple of the larger streets for this next round of resurfacing. And given the budget constraints we had, the suggestion was being made to not do those streets, and so since then, we have pulled those from the paving contract that's about to be let. So if there's a discussion that needs to happen about that, I don't know that we want to wait necessarily until the budget meeting, because we may miss the, the letting of the pavement, the resurfacing contract.
Can you email us that information again about the roads that were being planned to spend that up to $2 million on, please, so we can chat about it?
Yes, and they were, they were largely in Greenfield Park and North South Station.
Exactly. Okay, yeah, if you could give us some information, because basically, you were taking the money, but you were sticking at Jones Sausage, so it was gonna be spent sometime, just not in the, this current or next budget year.
Correct. So it's just, just keeping more towards new road, rather than asking you to pull some of your street and sidewalk money away to put towards the resurfacing.
And Phil?
I had some shit.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I said, hey, I...
Yep.
I just, I apologize, she was not, not taking care of streets that need to be taken care of, they may not need, in that bad a shape, but if we were planning to resurface them, we're planning to resurface them. Second...
Just, just to clarify, though, Ms. Singleton, these weren't originally planned to be? This was just a recommendation, if the council wanted to divert some bond funds, we could, but it wasn't, it's not, it's not taking them off of a list.
Right.
It's just it would deplete almost one year's regular resurfacing, because they're primarily commercial. Okay?
Secondly, the Garner Info app, I'm, if everybody here uses it, I do, I've got last week or so, people have called, or I'll see them and say, hey, can you ride by so-and-so's, see the tall grass on this street, and whatever, and I've turned in about a dozen in last week. So it's, it's that time of year, and, you know, if somebody makes a complaint, the meeting's on a Thursday or Friday, I will wait through the weekend to see if they can cut it that weekend before I turn them in, and just try to be to benefit of the doubt, but we've got some areas, I even sent one today, Mr. Hodges, I responded back over there, proposed development on Garner Road, the Townhome Project, before, between Brown Oil and Brown LP Gas and Andrews, they hadn't cut the grass at all this year.
Yeah.
I mean, it's horrible, I'm like, gosh, be responsible. So, I turned that in, too, so. Anyway, the Garner Info app is really handy, y'all use it, and I'm sure you do, it's a nice tool to have. Now, I'm finished, Mr. Dillinger.
Okay, thanks, sure. Mr. Matthews?
Just one item, since we're on the subject of paving, I stopped by a post office today, and I was following this little short lady, and she disappeared right in the middle of the street out there.
She disappeared in two or three streets out there.
And seeing what Mr. Schwarzenegger did about a week ago on a pothole that nobody wanted to fill, would I get arrested if I went by Lowe's, Home Center, got two bags of P-Rock or River Rock and fill that hole up, so we won't lose people and damage our cars? What are our options on that? I know it sounds a little wacky, but it's a bad situation out there. It's, it's embarrassing, it truly is.
It is, it's terrible. People are driving, they're causing traffic problems, driving around the hole to keep from going in it, and it's, it's messing up the other traffic coming the other way.
Because I truly don't mind doing it, it's not a problem, it's just, I don't wanna get arrested while I'm doing it.
We appreciate the offer. I'm happy to report that staff has been in contact with the property manager and the owners regarding that, and they are planning repairs to, they recognize the issue and are planning repairs and realize the urgency on it. So I don't have a timeline for what that looks like, but certainly can follow up with staff to find out what they're learning, but the good news is, is we're getting, we're getting feedback, and we're, we're able to communicate with the property managers and owners about the concerns of the parking lot.
There's more than one hole, there's that great big one, but there's two or three others throughout the parking lot.
So the, the entire condition of the parking lot.
That's awful.
Thank you very much, I'll hold off on my mission to give you a chance to take care of that. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
If you do wanna take that mission, please let us know, so we can take videotape like Arnold got.
That'll be a good one.
And we can, I broadcast it.
Oh, so publicity, that's what it is.
Okay. Well, thank you, council, for your participation tonight and for your reports here. If there's nothing else, I'm going to call this meeting firmly adjourned. See ya. Good night to you all.